We are reconvening from closed session. I would ask the city attorney if he has any questions.
Evening, Mayor and council members. The city council was in closed session this evening on conference with labor negotiator and also conference with legal counsel on existing litigation, and there's no action to report out of that session.
So we'll have the roll call. Councilmember Powers here, Singleton, Shelton.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Payne. Here. If we could rise for a moment of quiet there. And we will have Coach 238 lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will the audience please remain standing? Color guard attention. Color guard prepared to post colors. Salute. Post colors. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The audience may be seated.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and Shore West Cable system. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
I would also like to remind you that this council observes the Community of Character Coalition Pledge. We will go to agenda approval. Any additions or additions?
I have one agenda item number three I'd like pulled.
Pulled number three.
Which is the resolution on opposing the state's proposal for abolishing the redevelopment agency.
Okay. Then we will go to presentations.
Our first presentation is from SACOG Director of Transportation Matt Carpenter and Senior Planner Dave Chabazian.
Good evening, Mayor Payne and members of the council. I'm Matt Carpenter, the Director of Transportation Services with SACOG, and I'm here this evening with my colleague David Chabazian, who is the Project Manager for our Rural Urban Connection Strategy. We really appreciate this opportunity to come forward and tell you a bit about some of the active efforts we've got at SACOG, and I wanted to give you an overview of some of the work we're doing in terms of our planning and our funding. We're going to be giving kind of a broad overview and then would offer us the opportunity then to come up for any questions and answers you've got. I do have a presentation. I'm not sure if the slideshow could...
Maybe.
Right, there we go. Just a little bit of background, as many of you may know, SACOG is, you know, we represent a region that covers six counties and we have 28 jurisdictions. Our board of 31 members includes Mayor Payne, and we deal with issues across our region ranging from transportation planning and funding matters to special studies as you're going to be hearing tonight about what David Chabazian will be talking about with our RUCS project.
You might adjust the microphone so we can hear you a little better.
Oh, sorry. It's a little... Yeah. So, one of the first things that we really wanted to make sure to emphasize is something that was really at the core of what we're very involved with at SACOG is integrated transportation and land use planning, and that involves both a best central project, the update of our Metropolitan Transportation Plan, or MTP, that's underway, as well as any number of other special studies and technical assistance efforts that we complete for our members. The MTP really is kind of, it brings together basically everything we do at SACOG. It is our region's long-range transportation vision, and we're currently in the midst of an update process, making sure that we fulfill many of those federal and state requirements, including this long-range 20-plus-year vision, and that we're really mindful of issues such as financial constraint, especially in this time of budget challenges, as well as air quality conformity, making sure that the balance of projects that we think the region will need over the course of the future don't cause any problems in terms of us meeting some of the Clean Air Act standards that we must achieve. In addition to the work we do on the MTP that brings together so much of what we do in transportation land use planning, we do do any number of other special studies and kind of technical assistance for our members. Things that we are actively involved with include the implementation of the blueprint. An example of that would have been last year when we offered some funding for studying the Edmond Gulch Trail through our community design program, as well as some of the rural urban connection strategy project that you're going to hear about in more detail from David. Another project we're really excited about launching this next year involves looking at the goods movement and farm-to-market travel along the Interstate 5 and Highway 99 corridor between here and San Joaquin County, and we'll be working with our agency partners in San Joaquin to complete that work. But because the MTP really is kind of at the core of much of what we do at SACOG right now, I wanted to just offer you a few kind of slides to give you a little bit of background about where we're at in the process and what we're learning from that work. We really are committed to really four points of input for the MTP process that are kind of typical and really in any big planning effort we do at SACOG. We're currently trying to synthesize the input we've received over the first six months of the project, and some of the input we've received includes the direction from our SACOG Board, including Mayor Payne and others. We've also completed through public outreach a series of workshops and focus groups that engaged a number of Galt citizens. Right now, we're currently in a kind of a stage where we're working with our local agency partners, including Greg Holliday and Kirk Campion, to try to look at some of the projects and land use allocations that we'll have in the plan. And then finally, is this commitment at SACOG to look at technical analysis or trying to respond to increasing guidance from our federal and state partners that we need to make sure that the transportation projects that we prioritize, really you get good cost effectiveness and good cost benefit for those investments. So all four of those points of input that will hopefully lead to a region's update to the long-range transportation plan. A couple of things we just wanted to point out that we learned from our South Sacramento workshop, we had a workshop in Elk Grove in October, and that's where many of the input, much of the input from Galt citizens was captured. We learned that there was some support for looking at complete streets or making our streets and intersections safer, as well as kind of recognizing that as we look further out, a plan that's going to look 25 years out, it's really critical that we consider transit or pedestrian improvements that kind of help and support the mobility for our aging population. And finally, there was a recognition, I think, by a number of participants at that workshop that there would be some strategic kind of road investments that would be needed, both here in a growing community like Elk Grove and Galt, as well as other places in the region that are dealing with some of the growth pressures and congestion. Just a quick roadmap in terms of where we're going from, the input we've received from the workshops and the current actions, is that we, right now, are working towards developing a preferred scenario, a draft preferred scenario for our horizon year of 2035, and we hope to have that completed by early summer, and then be able to kind of consider some additional input to kind of make sure that our board will be ready to adopt the plan by the spring of 2012. As we move forward in our work right now with our agency partners, there are some active issues we're looking at, both in terms of land use issues as well as transportation issues. This is going to be a unique plan for the region because it's the first plan that we've completed at SACOG to implement the state law 375, Senate Bill 375, that really forces us to look carefully at land use and transportation interactions in a way that we've not done before. And so as part of that, there's a revisiting right now of looking carefully at the growth, and especially in a growing community such as Galt, what's the likely impact of some of the land use growth that's projected on prospective transportation investments, as well as checking in again with our economists, Stephen Levy, in terms of what we're learning about what the region's housing market's going to look like in the future, and how close to the point of recovery are we getting. In terms of transportation issues that we're actively looking at, I mentioned that we've heard from the public that there's a strong amount of support for looking at complete streets or trying to find ways to improve our streets so that they can serve all users. As part of that work, we're currently looking at if there's opportunities to increase the level of funding expected for improving, making our roadways safer, and offering more bicycle pedestrian and transit access, as well as that real scrutiny of big projects across the region, really looking at their cost effectiveness, because as we look at the challenge of having to decide between, you know, a great deal of need but more limited state and federal dollars, it's becoming increasingly important for us to really evaluate whether or not a project offers us good benefit. Now, planning, of course, is at the core of much of what we do at SACOG, the integrated transportation and land use planning, but the other, another key role that I think would be of interest to the council is what we do regularly in terms of transportation funding at SACOG. One of our core responsibilities is the management and maintenance of our Metropolitan Transportation Improvement Program, or MTIP. This is a four-year program of projects that are fully, have full funding packages, and it's through this instrument, by working with your staff and others throughout the region, that we're able to manage the federal dollars that flow for roads and transit and bicycle and pedestrian investments. Just since 2004, we've programmed with regional dollars nearly $10 million funding for projects in Galt. Of course, that includes, a big part of that was to complete the funding package for the Central Galt Interchange, or $8 million that went to that project, as well as a number of other key investments in the community, such as some road rehabilitation funding we were able to capture through the ARA funding from the federal government, as well as what some of the investments you may have seen on C Street or Old Town, the streetscape. Now, in addition to the federal dollars that we make prioritization of those funds across the region, we also have a role of looking at how, coordinating with Caltrans in terms of the State Transportation Improvement Program, or STIP, and one of the more recent actions we've done is working with you and your staff on trying to make sure that the pedestrian safety improvements at the Union Pacific Road Crossings could be funded and then completed. And then, of course, another regular, another regular effort that we do at SACOG is in regards to the Transportation Development Act. Every year, we hold an annual unmet needs hearing, and we've just recently had the hearing here for Elk Grove and Galt, and that, that unmet needs hearing, it's really an opportunity for the public to say if there's any unmet transit needs that they believe should be funded through the TDA funding. Of course, what ultimately results is a balance of the investment or the revenue, the $700,000 in the case of this coming fiscal year, going to both transit and local streets and roads rehabilitation. A regular source of funding, of course, is a critical investment for the ongoing, you know, maintenance of your streets and roads as well as operating transit services. And then one final area where we're very involved in at SACOG, and increasingly we're moving into this, is in terms of providing more direct transportation services. Just like our planning often leads to funding implementation and making sure a project like the Central Galt Interchange could happen, we're also very involved at SACOG in trying to make sure that our plans can turn into direct services that can help the citizens in our region. A few different initiatives that you may have come across that I think are of interest include the Agricultural Worker Banpool Program. We received a competitive state grant to start up a program that's really helping match farm workers in our region with transportation options. Of course, the economic impact of our agriculture economy is significant, and trying to make sure they have a safe and reliable means to get to work is really the purpose of that program. A second effort we're actively involved with is called the Connect Card. Imagine a credit card that will allow you with one, with that one card, an opportunity to go seamlessly between South County Transit Lane to Elk Grove Transit or Regional Transit, and it will hold, it will basically have your fare in it and allow for that seamless travel, making much more efficient use of transit travel in our region. And then finally, a third area where we've been adding a lot of features to it is in terms of 511 or traveler information, available by phone or on the web. There's a real, there's a richness of information there, dynamic, real-time traffic information about the I-5 and Highway 99 corridors, as well as a trip planner to help you plan your next transit trip or even bicycle and pedestrian travel. We're looking at the other features on this to make sure it's voice activated, and so this is an ongoing effort at SACOG to make sure that your travel in the region is smooth and efficient. So, of course, I gave you sort of the 30,000-foot broad summary of what we're doing in some of our core areas at SACOG. Now's a real opportunity for David Chabazian to go into a bit more detail about a focused project called the Rural Urban Connection Strategy.
Thank you, Matt. As Matt mentioned, I'm managing a project called Rural Urban Connection Strategy, or RUCS. It's much easier, flows off the tongue, much, much better than Rural Urban Connection Strategy. So, I'm going to talk to you today about the RUCS project. Let me get out of this presentation here first. What you have in front of you also is a booklet that we produced back in December to, as part of a regional forum that we did to kind of display to the public the project, where it is today. And I do want to emphasize that the project is ongoing. What I'm showing you today is really just a summary of where we are, kind of midstream in the project. We've made a lot of advances in the work that we have done. There's still a lot of other work that we need to do. So you're getting kind of the update of where we are currently, and I'm going to give you some of the, some of the information that we presented at this regional forum. Mayor Payne was there, and many others in the region. There was about 600 people, and so I'm giving you a summary plus some information from that forum. But I want to take a step backwards first and kind of give you the reasons why we're doing this project. It's actually a required project for SACOG. We, in the last Metropolitan Transportation Plan that we did, had a mitigation measure that we had to meet to address the issues of impacts on agricultural lands in the region. And so this became a project that grew out of a mitigation measure in our EIR that was identified back in, a couple of years ago in the last MTP. It's also a transportation control measure for air quality purposes, and finally, we are a demonstration region nationally for NEPA streamlining for transportation projects, and so this is part of that process. So what are the objectives of this project? Well, what we're trying to understand is how do the rural parts of the region fit in with the whole picture? SACOG does a lot of research, and we have a really deep understanding of our, of our urban areas. We don't have as much understanding of our rural areas, and so we're trying to balance that out and really get a complete picture of the region. We're looking at this from an economic perspective. So what are the, what are the drivers of the rural economies? What are the issues there? And what is it that's going to make these areas continue to be sustainable and economically viable going forward? So we're developing a lot of data and information to help us understand that and putting strategies together and comparing those, looking forward into the future. The project really starts with the blueprint, which some of you may be familiar with. A couple, a few years ago, we finished up the project, and it's now the underpinning of the, of the transportation work that we do at SACOG. It was a look at the urban parts of the region, how they're going to grow in the future, and what are some ways that we can manage that growth to reduce our impact on the transportation system, but also, that bottom bullet, reduce our impacts on our natural resources. And that was a good starting point for the RUCS project, because if you look at the region's growth out to the year 2050, that's what it may look like. That purple area is what it may look like if we continue to grow the way we're growing, versus the blueprint plan, which is a much smaller footprint, and that's accommodating the same amount of growth. So in terms of acreage, it's a pretty big deal. It's close to 230,000 acres, and much of that is agricultural land. So this becomes one of the key rural-urban connections here in the region, is to manage our urban growth in the first place, and then concentrate on those rural parts of the regions and figuring out ways to make them more economically viable going forward. So as we started the project, we looked at what the challenges and the opportunities are in our rural areas, and we distilled those down into five topic areas that I'm going to talk about tonight. Land use and conservation plans and policies, the infrastructure of agriculture, that would be things like roads, of course, but also your processing, your distribution, labor, water, all of that stuff going into the, into the agricultural systems we need to understand better. We also need to understand what are the new opportunities? So, of course, we have, we have production agriculture here in the region, and that's been our, our bread and butter, so to speak, for a long, long time, but what are the new opportunities out there? And so I'll talk a little bit about those. Forest management is a topic in and of itself. About a third of our region, or about 30%, is forested, and so that became a topic area all by itself. And then finally, regulations is that thread that runs through everything. It's kind of dictating what you can and can't do, and whether business is easy to do or hard to do. The steps through the project were pretty basic when we're looking at any kind of planting system. First, we want to understand what's going on currently, so what are those current conditions? Then, once we understand those challenges and opportunities currently, what are the innovations that will address those challenges or promote those opportunities? And then finally, how do we implement those? What is it that we can do to actually, to activate those innovations? So that's the process that we're going through in this project. Part of that process was to, was to educate our board, and so we took them out on tours of the region, showing them what agriculture looked like, and many of our board members are coming from urban areas, and so they don't really understand agriculture or, you know, have experience of getting their hands dirty, jumping on a tractor like this. Now, this is, this is a former board member, City of Sacramento, and we got her up on a tractor and, "Look out when you have an urban person driving a tractor." But it worked. It worked. This was obviously crop dusting among farm, and coming down to this part of the region out of the Toloneira Dairy, looking at how you can take this dairy and turn it into a value-added product. This is one of those new economic opportunities that I was talking about with their, with their methane digester, how you can add value to your operations.
Was that Fred De Nier's dairy?
That's the Toloneira?
Was that Fred De Nier's dairy that you're showing here?
Out here to the west?
Uh-huh.
Yes. So, looking at the land use topic area, again, kind of starting with the blueprint project and thinking about how our urban areas are going to expand, the main issue that we found as talking, in talking to people was that it's the edge issues that are one of the, one of the critical areas when we talk about land use. What's happening at the edge? What do we have to deal with? What's the conflict between farming and urban uses? Now, we would hope that every edge looks something like this. You've got agriculture right up to the fence line, and every, you know, the farmers are able to do what they want to do, and on the urban side, you, it's business as usual. But what we found was that, in fact, at the edge, you have pretty high rates of fallowing. You have that hard edge, which is a pretty, pretty defined line between urban and rural. You know, we're over 30% rates of fallowing, and at the soft edge, where you have a more feathering out of land uses, you're up over 40% rate of fallowing. And that compares to an average of about 8% in any given year of fallowed land in our straight agricultural areas. So it's a pretty big difference, and that becomes, you know, one of the key issues is how does the urban edge affect agriculture? So what's going on there? Well, we have conflict. You know, going in one direction, we have dust and noise and spray and odor. Going the other direction, we have vandalism and theft, and we have pets running out into these farming areas, a lot of traffic. Matt mentioned that earlier, that we're, you know, we're looking at this in our MTP. And that's one of the biggest issues, is this spillover of urban traffic into rural areas, people using these rural roads to get around urban congestion. And so we put together a list of innovations that our stakeholders in a series of workshops helped us basically distill down to these, these bulleted items here, and we kind of, we were able to look at them in two different bundles. One is, what are the innovations at the edge that would really be more effective? And so buffering and having some sort of a park system and policies that really define boundaries, these are ways that you can start to really address those edge issues. And then as you get beyond that, what are the zoning, zoning ordinances that help support agriculture by allowing things like processing, agritourism, and, you know, the division of land into smaller parcels and clustering homes? What are those policies and those plans that help us preserve agricultural systems and still allow those other uses that are out there, but in a way that reduces conflict and promotes agriculture? So backing this up is technical work, and in good SACOG fashion, we always stand on our technical work, because we believe that good information helps make better decisions. And so the land use, starting from the land use perspective, we really wanted to understand, well, what is, what's the picture? What does it look like? And, you know, the starting point is, is kind of missing what agriculture is really all about, and that is what our general plans look like here in the region. So up in the top corner there, you see what, what the, the policy perspective is today on agriculture. That is that agriculture is all one color. It's green. So it seems like we're just all growing one crop, but we know in fact that that's not true. In fact, we're growing over about, over 120 crops, if not more, here in the region. And so one of the first things we did was to turn that map on its head, and instead of having a lot of colors defining urban areas and one color defining the rural areas, we now have a lot of colors defining our rural areas and one color defining urban. And so now we understand where things like our rice district or rice region is, that's the pink that you see here, or the processing tomato district, which is that dark red, and we're able to start to categorize and understand what the, what the landscape actually looks like. And this helps us now understand, well, where are kind of the hotspots for certain activity, and what are, what are the needs then here in the region for the different cropping systems that we have? So, again, starting from this picture, this is just a blow-up of that crop map, so you can see it a little more clearly, and we'll, we'll focus in on, on the Galt area here and just what it looks like around the city of Galt. As you can see, based on, on the analysis that we've done and the data that we've collected, there's obviously vineyards all over the place. We have dairies scattered around the city. We have a lot of grain and vegetable production, mostly grain production, alfalfa production and grazing. Now, these are generalized categories, and we can go parcel by parcel and see what's going on. But this, this makes the map a little more readable for us to start to generalize it into, into categories of agriculture, categories of crops, rather than field by field specifics, because if you, if it was that way, it'd be very checkered and be hard to read. So once we have this, we can then start to understand, again, how these districts translate into different indicators or different activities going on. This is pivoting off of that crop map, a way for us to look at how the viability of agriculture is today and how it may change in the future. This is a depiction of return on investment based off of that crop map. This shows you the, the needs for labor and where that labor is needed in the region. So this helps us understand, for example, where would you put more housing for our farm workers, or that transportation service that Matt mentioned earlier? This is the number of truck trips that are generated, so again, going back to the transportation system, if we know where kind of the hotspots of truck activity is, it gives us an idea of where we may need to be making investments in the, in the rural transportation system to serve those needs. And then this is another one. This is water use or water demand, again, by crop and generalized into these categories, so we have an idea of how much water is being demanded and where that demand is. It also allows us to do some scenario testing. So I'm going to walk you through quickly a scenario over in Yolo County that we, we kind of played with, and this is just a very hypothetical scenario, but we go into that study area and we say, okay, there's a farmer who's got 2,000 acres of alfalfa, and he decides that, you know, there's an up and coming market, given the demographic changes in our region, that as, as we age, we need, our diets are going to change, and so he decides to put in plums, dried plums or prunes. So he switches 2,000 acres of alfalfa to 2,000 acres of dried plum. And what our modeling and data allow us to do is then to say, well, how would that affect the viability of agriculture? And in this case, the value goes up by $8 million, the return goes up by $2 million. Of course, this is after the orchard is mature, and the farmer has paid down some of that initial investment. But then we also see things like, we need more water, or that grower needs more water for that crop. for that crop, he needs more labor, but his impact on the transportation system has gone down. So this is the capacity that we have now in our system to do this kind of analysis. Another thing we can do is we can look at kind of these global changes of what happens in agriculture as we look at how international markets may affect us. So in this example, what if grain prices went up? What if they doubled? And this is actually a real example. The droughts in Russia and the fires in Russia have decimated their wheat crops, and so it's caused worldwide grain prices to nearly double. What our modeling says is that the fallow land here in this region, because of those high prices in wheat, will go into grain production. And so this is the kind of capacity that we have now to help us better understand how viable agriculture is and can be in the future here in our region. On the new opportunity side, one of the main things that we're looking at is the local food system. So while we have plenty of commodity agriculture, big-scale agriculture here in the region, we have this growing trend in local, small-scale agriculture, serving markets, you know, right here in downtown Sacramento and downtown Galt, and any big restaurateur or retailer who wants that local label, these farmers are tapping into that market. And so we see this as a really good, new opportunity for our growers here in the region. So these expanding markets of locally grown food, particularly with institutions, schools and hospitals are really starting to seek out that locally grown food as part of their initiative for better health with their students. And then we also see it in the retail markets, in the grocery stores and in the restaurants, looking for that local label, particularly if it's organic. So what does the food system look like today, and what is this, how does this fit into the whole thing? Well, we, in this region, can grow about three point four million tons of food a year on average. We consume two point two million tons of food. So you'd think, on the whole, wow, we can feed ourselves, we grow plenty, we have actually excess, but that's not the way the system works. Most of what we grow is trucked out of the region for national, international markets. And what we eat is trucked into the region from other markets. And so what we have estimated is that about two percent of what we're eating is coming from local sources. So that means that ninety-eight percent of what we're eating is coming from somewhere else in the country or the world. That's an opportunity that our growers are starting to tap into. They're finding niches that they can expand and take that two percent up to, you know, five, ten, and other types of market penetration. So what are the advantages? Well, those direct sales are putting more money into the farmer's pocket. Our consumers are being able to identify where their food's coming from, and even go out and talk to the grower about how they grew it, and what are they growing, and visit the farm. But the other thing that I think is really important is that it starts to insulate our growers from the international market fluctuations that are really starting to churn up the markets. We're seeing commodity prices really get kind of crazy. They're up one year, down the next. So right now, it's an up year, but who knows what's happening in the next year? Those local markets are insulated from that. So our objectives in understanding the system and really trying to figure out how we can be more economically viable in tapping into that system is really lumped into three different objective sets. There's eight in total, but the first two are on the production side. How do we get our growers to be more sappy in their business and production? The bottom set, that orange there, is on the consumer side. How do we educate consumers about where their food's coming from, and what locally grown products they can buy? And then the connective tissue is the infrastructure, the roads, but more importantly, the distribution and aggregation systems and the processing, so that, so those food products are in a form that people will consume. Another flow chart that's showing that system looks something like this. Again, production linked to consumption via infrastructure. And what we're doing is trying to understand different parts of this system. And going forward, we're going to see more of those boxes dotted as we get some money coming in from the state to help us dig in deeper on the local food system and how we can exploit that as an economic opportunity. We're also able now to understand, well, how much land do we need in production to serve these local markets? And so we can look at total consumer demand for food here in the region, and then estimate, how many acres do we need to grow that food? So here's, here's an example of the fruits and vegetables and grains that people consume, and how much land we might need to grow that food. And at the bottom, that ten percent, we need about thirty thousand acres. At fifty percent of market demand, we would need a hundred and fifty thousand acres. And so it gives you an idea of regionally how much land we may need going forward to continue to feed ourselves here locally. Of course, in keeping with our core mission at Secog, we need to understand what are the transportation issues that are underpinning the viability of our agricultural systems? And so the first thing we need to understand is, what's the push and pull and the tug between using those roadways for commerce, moving your tractors around, moving your implements between fields, getting your product to market, and those roads also being used for daily travel by commuters, and the spillover that I mentioned earlier from urban areas? So we have tension on our roadways, and we're seeing, you know, more traffic spilling onto these rural roadways as we see more rural development, and we see a congestion building in urban areas, and people using these roads as auxiliary roads. And so you have the slow-moving traffic of agriculture versus the fast-moving traffic of our commuters. This creates a safety issue, and in fact, in our region, about forty-four percent of fatal accidents occur in rural areas. And so that's in contrast to about thirteen percent of our population being in the rural areas. So this is a real issue for us to understand. How do we make those improvements for commerce, but also make sure that we're addressing the safety issues as well? So as we go forward and we think about investing in the roadway system, those issues are on the table and really need to be worked out. How do we figure out the farm-to-market routes? What are those key routes? And the mapping that I showed you earlier is a start for us to get at that. We can also work with growers and planners to understand what roads are those key routes, and be sure that we invest in them. And then are those investments also good for the local parks, the local markets that I talked about earlier? So the balancing then is also just not only between urban and rural, but also between large-scale agriculture and small-scale agriculture. And what are the, how do we monitor the roadways? How do we maintain them? And what's the funding out there that we can tap into to address those issues? And then also, as Matt mentioned earlier, what are the other issues that are going on in the rural areas transportation-wise? Moving agricultural workers, addressing the issues in small communities, how do you make sure that it's safer cyclists, emergency service access? All those things come into play as we think about making those investments in the transportation Couple other things that we're looking at, obviously, water is a key piece of infrastructure that we need to understand better and make sure that we have good water supply going forward for our growers, and balancing that with also the urban needs as well as the needs for the environment. As I'm sure you're well aware, the delta issues are not just in the delta, they're spreading throughout our region. And then forest management, as I mentioned, is a project in and of itself. But we're not just talking about managing fire. That's a really obvious key objective because of the air quality implications and the severity of fires and the frequency. But when we do that, we're also managing our watershed, the water supply and water quality, the habitat quality, as well as the other economic opportunities that are up in our forested areas, such as recreation and other wood products that can come out of our forested areas. So going forward, and as I mentioned, the project's not done, we still have plenty to do, but going forward, some of the things that we're going to be looking at are labor, very, very important, another key input into agriculture and the infrastructure of agriculture. How much labor do we need? And how, more importantly, do we support that labor supply here in the region so we have it available all the time? What are the processing needs that we have? How do we turn those products into something that a consumer buys on a regular basis? How do we aggregate and distribute our food products here in this region and beyond? And then those other economic opportunities, such as energy production, or sequestering carbon and selling those credits on the carbon markets? How can we tap into the recreation and open space activities that people consume here in the region, such as going into the preserve here locally, or going into Sierras for hiking or rafting? And then finally, the regulatory issues, particularly as we get into implementation, what are those regulatory issues that we need to address? And how can we advocate for reform to help advance our agriculture and rural economies here in the region? Be glad to answer any questions about the project, and thank you for your time.
I don't see any questions coming up, but just wanted to say thank you so much for coming here. It's kind of a glimpse as to what's going to come towards us in the future, and it reminds us that Galt isn't an island down here that we're affected by so many things which you have pointed out. Hopefully, we'll make good use of all this knowledge that you've shared with us, and we'll benefit economically and environmentally and every other way. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are all a lot smarter than we were, hopefully. So, ready to go to the next presentation?
Yes. Next presentation from the Galt Lions Club, I believe, Ruben and...
Doug Campbell?
Doug Campbell.
Point out, we won't be as colorful, but we will be shorter. To explain what we're doing, Larry Littleton, who was very well-known in the community, has a building named after him. And there was a memorial in November when he died, or he died in October, but the memorial was in November. And we discovered that there was absolutely nothing at the building that said anything about him, who he was, what he did, or anything else. He was very active in the Lions, so we, as a local club, came up with the idea of putting together a plaque. And we made it a project for the whole district, and we have contributions. As an example, it cost around six hundred dollars, and I think we're up to about four hundred and forty, the money that has come in so far. So it's from Lions all over Northern California. And tonight, we are presenting it to the city, and I will work with voice in having it put up in the building. So we hope it will be a nice addition to Littleton Center.
I'm going to come down there and grab that.
Do you want to read what it says, or?
Do you guys want to read what it says, or?
Yeah.
Could you go to the microphone?
Microphone.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. This is a picture of Larry Littleton, and it says, "Lawrence Larry Edwin Littleton, 1914-2010, husband, father, educator, community leader, Lion. Education, graduated from College of the Pacific, 1937 to 1977, Galt High School music teacher and principal, civic. 1946 led the effort to incorporate the city of Galt. 1946 to 1950, served on the first Galt City Council. 1996, the city named the building for Larry Littleton. And Lodi Memorial Hospital, he was a Lodi Memorial Hospital Foundation Board Member. He promoted development of the medical clinic in Galt, and he was in the 59th Army Band of the California National Guard for thirteen years. And he's also a member of Lions International, with many physicians in our group. Lions is the world's oldest service organization. We do charitable work and service to our communities." And I won't read all the little physicians he held, all the physicians he held in the Lions Club. But we wanted to present this to the city for the Littleton Center.
Thank you very much.
Come on. Sure.
Okay. Taking it back now.
Remember that goes in the building.
Yeah.
Just like laughing or something.
The city manager should be on that phone.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I agree. I second the motion.
Come on, Jason.
Take another one with the city manager.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Well, some of the strong recommendations.
Ready? One, two, three.
Thanks, Jason. Thank you. Liz doesn't want to be in it. They're trying to get you in it, Liz.
Thank you so much. That was wonderful.
Yeah, thanks.
Is there a representative from the Galt Historical Society?
Bring some burritos.
We'll pass that one along, then.
Again, I just want to say thank you to the Lions Club. That's a wonderful tribute that you've put together for a wonderful person.
Yes, yes.
And the next one's not here.
Okay. We have no one from the Historical Society? Al, you're not...
I don't know what it means.
You know nothing. You know nothing, okay. All right, then, we'll go on to public comments.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, "Members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public. You may also address any agenda items during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers, and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. The request that you state whether you live within the Galt city limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker." Athena Buchanan, she's gone.
She's right there.
Oh, no, she's back.
Just walked in.
I thought you were gone.
I was, and now I'm not.
Just in time, thanks.
Just in time, thank you. Good evening, council members and fellow Galtonians. My name's Athena Buchanan. I reside on the east side within city limits of Galt. And I just wanted to present this evening, my point of view for my business and my family. Our business is Buchanan Auto Glass. We have been within the city of Galt for eight years as of October. The city of Galt has always been wonderful to our business. And this past year, we had the opportunity to participate in the farmer's market. And I just wanted to thank council and citizens who participated, because it was a wonderful event, week after week. We don't have a storefront. Our business is mobile. It is a glass truck, and we go to where the broken glass is. So having an opportunity to set up a booth on a street of Galt, week after week, gave us the opportunity to meet citizens, to say, hey, we're here, let us help you, and we did. I could say, on the average, we gained probably two to three customers that had no idea we even existed. And that's after being in the Chamber Magazine year after year, after being in the basketball magazine for a Galt High School, and for always donating to whatever event was asked of us. So I just wanted to let you know that the farmer's market has been a wonderful event for my family and impacted our business very positively.
Thank you so much for those nice words, and for all your hard work, too.
Yeah, thank you, Dana. Farmer's Market is a great thing we have in Galt.
Can I just add that it is a joint effort with the city and the Chamber of Commerce, the shop local, and the farmer's market?
Yes, you can.
You did.
Okay, Randy Hunworthson?
Hunworthson.
I'm sorry. I'm really bad. I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
You're used to it.
Can you hear all right?
So far.
You all right? Okay, I'll stick to the script. I've been coming to the meetings now for, I don't know, four or five months, maybe. I've been impressed, not necessarily in a good way. But I've come here tonight just to ask a few questions, just to... the shop local, and the farmers' market?
Yes, you can.
You did.
Okay, Randy Hunworthson?
Hunworthson.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I'm really bad. I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
You're used to it.
Can you hear all right?
So far.
Okay, I'll stick to the script. I've been coming to the meetings now for, I don't know, four or five months, maybe. I've been impressed, not necessarily in a good way. But I'm here tonight just to ask a few questions, just to, what'd you say? Let the people of Galt know how you stand on an issue, on the Constitution, relating to the Constitution, which you took and ought to uphold and defend. I'd like to read the questions here and a request for your responses in writing addressed to me within the month. First, do you believe the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the California are the supreme laws of the land? I have a copy here, I'll pass out one of them. Have you read the Constitution within the time you were elected to the city council? In the event you have read the Constitution within the time period, do you believe the Constitution is easily understood and comprehensive? How would you define domestic enemy? And how would you handle one that would be considered a domestic enemy? This has just become a concern to me in the last couple of years since the present administration has come around in the mainstream media with some of their responses to questions, example of which was just yesterday, Senator Charles Schumer referring to the three branches of government as the Senate, the House, and the presidency. I'm sure I'm not the only one that got a laugh out of that. Anyway, that's the end of my presentation here. I'll pass out some copies for you.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Swatterback?
John Swatterback, I live in the city of Galt. I'd like to welcome the new council members to council. I was indisposed when you were sworn in, but I wish you nothing but the best. I know that you will consider public comments in your decision-making. I have some concerns I wanted to share with you. The wastewater treatment plant appears to have been a great success, and credit is due to Craig and his staff. There is one concern, though. The city was required to have the upgrade completed and in operation by May of 2010. By the time this upgrade is operational, the city will have been operating the wastewater treatment plant for 10 months without a permit, as far as I know. There may have been a stay that I missed or something, but I didn't know Regional was that easygoing. At first, we were going to be in operation January the 1st, and then it was moved until the end of February. And I didn't know that Regional was that lenient. So, I was just curious what the conditions are, as the citizens of Galt being fined for all this time we haven't had a permit. If they are being fined, we won't know about it for two or three years because the last fine was $408,000, and it was over a period, it was fines over a period of four years or Revenues from sewer connections in the city of Galt total $5 million a year. Fiber optics. January the 18th, council voted and approved an expenditure of $300,000 to fund fiber optics. I don't believe Lodi has fiber optics, nor Stockton, nor Sacramento Regional. I don't believe any of our neighboring cities have fiber optics installed from their sewer plants to the city hall. The city can't possibly dig a trench from the sewer plant to the city hall and install conduit, full fiber optic cable, repair the streets for $300,000. The cost will probably be in the millions of dollars. If the antenna tower is swaying three or four feet, then tie it down with guideboards, like most other antennas are secured. No one said anything about a ditch on the water tower when South Com put a ditch on the water tower, and it did nothing to help the citizens of Galt. This looks like the cheapest way to go that would help the citizens of Galt. This is going to come out of our sewer fund. Council should research this in further detail. These expenditures will increase sewer rates on the citizens of Galt in the near future if fiber optic is chosen. We can't even do the engineering work for $300,000, I don't believe. Water meters. Three years ago, the city requisitioned and spent one-half million dollars for engineering services to design and plan a cost associated with water meter implementation. Studies have shown that water meters generally results in 30% reduction in water consumption and also reduce overall energy use and sewage treatment. Water meter installation will reduce operating maintenance costs at the sewer plant, will also reduce operating maintenance costs of the city's domestic drinking water wells. Revenues from residential rate customers total $2.5 million a year, and yet staff indicates there's a need for more revenue. Maybe if the city had installed meters three years ago, staff wouldn't be asking for water rate increases now. This study was 2008, and nothing's been done or said about water meters. Water meters are a win-win situation. Other cities have already addressed and are in installing water meters. Mayor Payne, could you and council give the residents of Galt an update on plans for water meter installation? If not tonight and next week, I don't know, but I'd like to hear something more about water meters, if you could do that.
I will be happy to get with you and review that with you.
All right. Thank you very much. That's something that should be concerned of the citizens of Galt, and I think everyone would like to hear what we have planned for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Al Baldwin?
Going to close it? Al Baldwin, "I'm a citizen of Galt, very proud to be one because this is a city of character. But tonight, I'm concerned not only with Galt, but with California as a whole." I'm going to read it because it'll be quicker for you, and it'll get everything I want to say out. "I think the decision by our governor to take away the redevelopment agency is a huge mistake. Our Galt is becoming a great place to live and raise children. It has a lot of places to eat and to ride our bikes and to drive down good streets. New businesses want to open up in towns like ours. How did we get where we are now? Well, a lot of it came from redevelopment money. If you close the door on that, we may not be able to be a vibrant, healthy community. Healthy communities have a lower crime rate and more potential to attract more jobs. It has been said redevelopment is being pitted against schools as something that takes away from public education. But in fact, redevelopment agencies, school, and law enforcement all work together, particularly in our most depressed neighborhoods. Who do you think funds the sidewalks and streetlights that enable our children to walk to school safely? The state cannot afford to lose redevelopment. I was inspired to say this after reading an article by Ya Yen Iles, article in The Bee, and she was a former redevelopment planner in Sacramento, very smart. However, eliminating redevelopment agencies is not a long-term solution to the state's problems, and in fact, would be a step backward. The financial savings to California would be only for the first year. And then what? We all need to be part of the solution. I know that eliminating redevelopment is not going to improve test scores or the quality of our public schools, or decrease crime, or make our city any better. I think our governor has it all backwards. It's not a problem with redevelopment, it's an opportunity to get more jobs and build up our state so we can get more men and women back to work. I think we need our governor to change his attitude and start thinking more about opportunity and less about the problems we have because they'll all disappear if he does." I have a couple of minutes left, and I heard John Swatterback make his comment, and John has been really good for a number of years trying to get you to see his side of it and understand it and get answers, which is good. It's a good thing to do, that's why we have public comments. I want to let you know right now, I am for fiber optics, optics, optics. And I'll tell you, when you do, if you do, put them in the ground. I hope you lay another one next to it so that AT&amp;T and some other people can connect to it, because what you're looking at right now with just the sewer is just the immediate fix. I'm looking a little farther out because once you run these in the locations that are very profitable for you, you're going to find AT&amp;T and others that want to hook into it, and guess what? You get to charge them for it. It's amazing what it can do, but it will cost a little more to put those in. I grant you, it's a lot of money, but I'm just telling you right now, from what I've heard, what I've seen, what I've learned, that by doing the extra line in there, this town will gain immense profit from it. I know it sounds ridiculous, but it's true. Just bear me out, check me out, do everything you can. If you don't know it, look into it. It's there, it's for the taking. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Al.
City clerk, read the consent, oh, are there more? The full speaker sheet.
Okay. Do you want to read the consent calendar, please?
We have four items. The first, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 18th and the special meetings of January 18th and January 21st. Number two, approval of the city of Galt warrants. Number three, which was pulled for discussion, a resolution in opposition to the state's proposal to abolish redevelopment agencies in California. And number four, single audit report for fiscal year ended June 30, 2010.
Item number three was pulled. Do you want to address that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I support this wholeheartedly, but for the record, I'd ask, I would ask Liz if she would read that in, into the minutes, please. If you could read the resolution.
Oh, something.
Oh, yes.
Liz was going to let you mayor, but...
Okay. The resolution of the city council of the city of Galt, California, in opposition to the administration's proposal to abolish redevelopment agencies in California. Whereas, as part of its 2011-12 budget proposal, the governor has proposed permanently abolishing California's more than 400 local redevelopment agencies, and whereas this proposal represents more of the same misguided and illegal state budget raids of local government funds that voters have repeatedly sought to end, most recently in November 2010, when an overwhelming 61% of voters elected to stop state raids of local government funds, including redevelopment funds. And whereas this proposal will bring very little financial benefit to the state, according to the State Controller's Office, redevelopment agencies have more than $87 billion in bond and other contractual obligations that legally must be repaid before revenues are available to any other purpose. In fact, according to the State Department of Finance's own budget documents, there will be zero state savings in out-years from shutting down redevelopment, and whereas this proposal will destroy local economic development, including thousands of jobs and billions of dollars in local economic activity throughout California. And the city of Galt abolishing redevelopment will destroy the Redevelopment Agency Economic Development Program, which includes the Old Town Rehabilitation Project, the Belighted Property Acquisition Program, the Central Galt Corridor Infrastructure Project, and the Housing Rehabilitation Program. The totality of these projects will result in the loss of hundreds of permanent jobs in addition to hundreds more temporary construction, service, and delivery jobs. The loss of temporary and permanent economic benefit of these projects and programs will have a chilling and devastating effect on our local economy and delivery of public service to the residents of this community. And whereas throughout California, redevelopment activities support 304,000 jobs annually, including 170,600 construction jobs, contribute over $40 billion annually to California's economy in the generation of goods and services, and generate more than $2 billion in state and local taxes in a typical year. And whereas, eliminating redevelopment will take away one of the few tools local governments have to comply with state requirements to plan for more compact urban development, supported by transit-oriented developments, housing, jobs, and infrastructure. And whereas, eliminating redevelopment will destroy the development of affordable housing in California. Redevelopment agencies are the second-largest funder of affordable housing behind only the federal government, responsible for over 98,000 units of affordable housing since 1993. And whereas, shutting down redevelopment agencies is a violation of multiple state and federal constitutional provisions. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Galt formally opposes the administration's proposal to abolish redevelopment in California. Therefore, be it further resolved that the city of Galt authorizes its council and city staff to communicate its opposition to this proposal to the government, governors, the legislature, business groups, and citizens.
Thank you, Liz. I know that took a while, but I wanted that projected out to the public, especially for those individuals that are not here. I know that several people have been following it. With that said, I will make a motion that the resolution in opposition of the state's proposal to abolish the redevelopment agency be approved.
I second that motion.
Is there any further discussion?
I just want to say that was a very good call, Randy, and it was very well-written, whoever voted.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Not all of it.
Thanks, Al.
If there's no further discussion, then I will call for the vote, and I think we can roll call.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Absolutely aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
For the remainder of the consent calendar?
Move to her first.
Second. Roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
We have no scheduled event, or scheduled matters, regular calendar, so we'll move on to city attorney's office.
Ordinance adopting Chapter 9.44 of the Galt Municipal Code regarding abusive solicitation. Mayor and councilmembers, this ordinance, which regulates abusive solicitation in the city, was introduced at the last city council meeting, and unless you have any questions, it's presented for your adoption this evening.
Any discussion or questions?
I have no questions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Community Development Department.
Development permit process streamlining.
Thank you. I don't have a PowerPoint on this one.
Okay.
For the next one. Thank you. Mayor, remember checking them. Mayor...
You got one?
Rusty's next. Mayor members, council members of the audience, the staff report before you tonight is a culmination of efforts, planning department in consultation with the city attorney's office, to take a look at the city zoning code, to look at areas where we could propose amendments for consideration by the council, hopefully get some direction here tonight, that would in effect streamline the development and review process in specific and identified areas within the report. Also, you'll note within the report that we've identified particular code provisions that we believe need to be at least updated, clarified, integrated, and basically a little bit of a cleanup. With that, I would like to start out with, and there are seven specific items, I'll go through them briefly. If the council has any questions, stop me, or at the end, you can ask some questions. The first one deals with a procedure that we have utilized for over 20 years. It's called the Planning Advisory Committee. We regularly schedule... We regularly schedule every two weeks, every other one day, and allocate time for the development community to make appointments with staff in order to review new development projects, revisions to existing projects, or just to discuss a potential project. This process involves not only the building staff, building and planning, but also engineering, public works, when necessary, police department, Parks and Rec, and Fire District is routinely invited as well, and to provide comments on projects to applicants early in the process. The idea here is to get input early in order to make it as smooth a transition and process through the review and approval program. What we're asking here is direction to have those procedures actually codified in the municipal code. They are simply procedures which we established, like I say, over 20 years ago. So I think it would be important that the public be aware that that opportunity exists, and it makes most sense to put it in the code where they may look to see what processes are available and it would effectively, and hopefully, result in a streamlining of that review. The next item for consideration and discussion by the council is, relates to the Architectural Review Program. Currently, we have a program that addresses residential development in the City of Galt, all residential new subdivisions. And it's been in effect since about 1998, I believe. There are three separate areas that I'd like to talk about. One is changing the required approval of architecture review to occur rather than at the rezone public hearing stage or tentative map stage to a later point in the process, which would be either the final map or the approval of improvement plans, whichever occurs first. As the city council is aware, a tentative map is good generally for two years, and it can be as long as six years, depending upon legislative extensions and extensions by an applicant. When an applicant comes to, before the council or the commission, excuse me, for review of a new subdivision, they may not be ready to build immediately, and they may be, their plan may be to build in two or three years. Well, you may not know what the market conditions are in two or three years. The way the process works now, they would have to identify floor plans and elevations at the time that tentative map is approved. This would give them an opportunity to delay that review, and I'll talk about the approval bodies later, but later in the process. And hopefully, more closely at a time when the ready to build building permits and initiate construction. What it would avoid is getting an approval early and then have market conditions changed. They then have to go back through that process again for a public hearing and have revised building plans and elevations approved or considered once again. So it, number one, it puts off that decision when they may not be able to make a decision, and two, hopefully it would avoid going back through that process a second time. The second requirement, currently, there, the process is, we have an Architectural Review Committee, which is composed of two council members and one planning commissioner. Generally, the way it works, there is a review by that committee. It's not a notice public hearing, it's generally held at the municipal service center, the applicant's invited, they review building elevations, there's a few comments back and forth, sometimes staff will present a report, you know, and talk about general considerations for the architectural theme of what is being proposed. It should be pointed out also right now that there is no specific architectural standard for development in the city. And so there's really no objective basis for staff to make recommendations. It becomes somewhat subjective and the approving body has that authority. We're recommending that, rather than going through that process, that the approving body be the planning commission. And the way the staff report is written, I'm assuming that we're not going to make a change in the approval period, but even if we do approve it at final map, the planning commission could still be an appropriate body to hear that, to hold that public hearing, which provides the opportunity for neighbors, concerned citizens, to express their concerns on, you know, a proposed development currently the way it occurs. Staff's objective in this process was not to shortcut the public input process or to change what the desired outcome is, but simply adjust the time, which is more convenient to the developer, and at the same time preserve the public's input for review on projects. So that is one of the recommended changes. On, with the issue of architectural review, as I pointed out, there are no specifically divine, or defined requirements. The only thing we have, and I recommend that we retain it, is that you have a minimum number of floor plans and elevations to submit based on the number of units in the subdivision. If you have less than 40, it's three floor plans, nine elevations. I think it's 40 to 100, it is four floor plans and 12 elevations. Over that, it's five floor plans and 15 elevations. Historically, developers have been able to meet those requirements, and I think that provides the diversity that I think that the council has looked for in the past, as well as the community. I think I covered most of those issues. Third item, real quickly, relates to planned unit developments. We're recommending some cleanup language in here. Right now, the way it is put forth in the code, it's repetitive, it's somewhat onerous, and I think it's a disincentive for developers to try and utilize the planned unit development process, which does offer benefits in terms of variation in setback, lot widths and sizes, assuming that a planned unit development is approved. So those would be streamlining processes, actually as it relates to the public, public planned unit developments. The big box ordinance, we identify that. We are not recommending any substantive changes as it relates to the studies that are required, nor the square footage of buildings that would be affected. What we're looking for is identification of, and clarification of some inconsistencies between the architectural review, the big box ordinance, site plan review, and conditional use permits. We think there needs to be a better integration, the way it was put forth in the code. I think it was, it was developed and then dropped in the code, and there wasn't a comprehensive look at how it integrates, and I think it creates some confusion, particularly for applicants. So I think that would, in the, in the end, provide a streamlining of sorts. We're looking for clarifying the process also between site plan review and use permits to make sure that it is not to be construed as a cumulative process, but one that could occur simultaneously with both types of applications. Updating and simplifying application forms, we haven't looked at them in the planning department for a number of years. I think it's time that we take a look at them, streamline them, ask for the information that we absolutely necessarily need. And as it is now, there's a lot of information that sometimes is submitted, sometimes not, not all of it's always useful, and I think we need to take a closer look at that, which is time that an applicant would have to spend. Lastly, we are looking at, with the new general plan, to come up with some guidelines to talk about the consistency requirements between general plans and projects, and taking a look at both residential, or look at residential, commercial, industrial, and come up with examples that would demonstrate consistency with the general plan on typical projects and provide examples. And I think that would be very beneficial to the development community, to have that level of assistance, in addition to whatever they would like, you know, obviously staff is available to provide that assistance if asked, but I think it might be easier once we provide that to them as well. In conclusion, some of these, I think, will definitely streamline the process, they will have the benefit of changing timeframes by which, which would be more accommodating, I think, to the development community, and at the same time preserving the city's, or the community's input, particularly its interested citizens, in that review process as well. You will find on your desk, there were, I've sent the staff report out to several active developers in the community, I think you have a couple of emails. One was from Price Walker, he did provide a response, another one from Mike Oliver. To summarize Mr. Walker's comments, he thought all the recommendations would help the review process, particularly in these difficult times. We need flexibility and lower costs. He believes that these changes are a step in the right direction. His comment with regard to architectural review was to change it from the final map to building permit, and I'd like to comment on that. I discussed this with Price, and we talked about it at the staff level. I think that going to the final map at this point provides the level of benefit that I think the community, that the development community's looking at. I have a concern as to where we would be in the overall process of the development if we waited to building permit. Oftentimes, it may become a little bit more compact, and I, what I don't want to see is something rushed through at the last minute before the commission where developers, you know, hey, look, I got to get my building permits next week because it's going to rain. I think that there needs to be some lead time in there for the commission, the staff, and the community to comment on these projects. So I think that that would provide that timeframe. Doesn't mean that we can't revisit this at a later date. Building permits are deemed what the appropriate time would be, we can look at a change to the code, but I think, I would recommend that we still stay with final map or improvement plans at this point. I think it appears that he agrees with the, having the planning commission, that some of the changes with the architectural review, although he suggests that it be vested at the staff level. I wouldn't recommend that for a couple of reasons. One, I don't know that staff is the best gauge for what the architectural theme for a particular development is. Secondly, you need, in my opinion, a public review and public hearing process. This is what we have had implemented for a number of years, and I don't think the community really wants to see that changed, so I wouldn't recommend that you implement that. I think the rest of the items, he was supportive of the changes as provided. Mike Oliver, Fairway Oaks project, basically says streamlining is a good thing, all good changes, and he agreed. I also talked with Mr. Mike Gettrich, he's in the audience, I don't know if he has any comments on the subject, but I did talk with Mike and reviewed the report with him as well. That concludes my report, unless there are any questions.
There are like seven items-
Yes.
-in this report. Is there any one of them that the council members would like to discuss or have questions on?
Well, I just want to say that I think you did a good job on the streamlining. Having been on the architectural review and the planning commission, I think it's great that we are getting the citizens more involved in what is being done with their communities, and I think it's a really good step in the right direction.
Kurt, can you outline the next steps?
Yeah, I'm sorry. What we would do, assuming that direction from the city council is to review with, is to proceed with all or some of these, what we would then do is prioritize them. They will require separate staff reports and public hearings just to change these processes in the municipal code. I don't anticipate, I'm not going to do them all at once, I'll probably take one or two and maybe group some of them together, and we'll phase them in over time, within, you know, starting within the next month or two, when we can get scheduled before the commission and then address them as time goes on. We haven't set a priority on which ones would go first, probably talk about that internally and then proceed with that. But what we're looking for tonight basically is, if the city council agrees with these recommendations, then we would proceed. If not, let us know otherwise.
Is it the consensus of the council to direct him to proceed?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
So be it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is code enforcement.
Code enforcement overview and update.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, members of the audience, tonight, I have Rusty Hughes here with me tonight, he's the city's code enforcement officer, and he's here to give you just a brief overview on what he does in his capacity with regard to code enforcement, and to highlight the year 2010, and just kind of walk you through what the process is, what he does on a kind of day-to-day basis, and what's been accomplished over the last year, and what's been kind of targeted. And he has a PowerPoint presentation that he'll be giving you tonight.
Okay. I think we need to give Mr. Hughes kudos for being the employee of the year for the City of Galt.
Absolutely.
Right. Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Kurt, for the introduction. Good evening, council. I'm just here to, like you said, to try to give you a little overview of what I do, which I think is very important. Some of the people are unaware of who to go to or who to call. I receive a lot of phone calls sometimes that's not meant for me, or the police department and other departments in the city receive phone calls that are for me. So tonight, we'll just, we'll just try to go over some, a few things, and the first thing I want to read, I'm just going to read the definition of code enforcement, as you will find before you. Code enforcement is the prevention, detection, investigation, and enforcement of violations of codes or ordinances regulating public health, safety, and welfare, building standards, and land use. Code enforcement is a function local governments perform that citizens consider important for accomplishing community goals, such as protecting property values and the environment. And I would like to get in right away, just to try to give everyone an overview of the many aspects of what I do.
Rusty, I'm going to interrupt you. Can you blow that up, make it the full screen? Presentation would be easier to see some of the graphs. You know, do that, do slideshow.
Well, I'm not sure.
Someone's got mail.
Give me some engineering over here. There we go.
Public Works helps out, you know, come on.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay, is that better?
There we go. Thanks.
Okay, during 2010, there was approximately 400 cases that I addressed. Being a one-man department, it's sometimes very, very hard to go by numbers, but some of the, some of the cases that I have broken down before you is just some of the incidents, and I would like to explain a few of them, so everyone has a, has an idea of how it's broke down. As far as the animals go, animals are, they're dealt with in a way of, you know, whether it's stray animals, I'm working with animal control out of Sacramento, or mostly it's, mostly it's chickens and roasters.
Really?
That's, I get, I get more than you think of those complaints, just on the noise complaint basis. So that's strictly a complaint basis only call. The apartment inspections, apartment inspection will be mostly for tenant problems or health and safety codes, but that apartment inspection, I know there's only one up there, but that falls under many categories, such as property maintenance, or housing, or property maintenance commercial, so, and I have many, many different aspects in the, in the Trakit computer system that we use to track all of these, that it can fall under. Businesses, parking lots, it can even fall as close to ADA parking, the striping of a parking lot, the trashing of parking lots, the dumpsters on different commercial lots that need to be addressed. Existing unpermitted would fall under sheds or garage conversions that have been there for who knows how long, but now all of a sudden, maybe someone calls, and we have people living in those sheds or in those garage conversions that we have to address on a pretty frequent basis. Health and safety, health and safety would be no electricity, that's something that I would address rather quickly, when we have people that do not have electricity, and believe it or not, there's a lot of people that steal electricity that we have to address because it could be a fire hazard and a safety problem. Once again, theft of the electricity, sewage problems, and a big health and safety issue that I've dealt with a lot is fences that are down, that also have a pool in the backyard, especially on thoroughfares or ways of children walking back and forth to school, that becomes a, that becomes a very high priority. So property maintenance would be the next one. As you can see, that's the, that's the most hit. Property maintenance is dealt with pretty much every day, that's a big part of what I do, and under that falls junk and debris, broken windows, trash, high grass, it's a plethora of things that I deal with on a constant basis, which take up most of my time. my time. Setbacks would be as far as the sheds, fences too close to the sidewalk. You know, we field all kinds of those questions. Vehicle, RV, and boat, unsightly boats in driveways, RVs that are blocking, that are blocking traffic, blocking people backing out of their driveways. As far as the zoning code goes, and working without a permit, working without a permit is more common than one would think. John James, myself, we try to, we try to look for that on our daily outings to catch, to keep up with that. As far as the soft work permits, which are up there. Most of our contractors in the city, everyone has got to know is that they're very good, they're very good about staying within the rules. And I have finance down there, I don't have finance up on the board, but I do get a lot of expired business licenses that come to me that I have to check up on people that just are not paying them. And at one time this year, there were 95 of those given to me in one day. And so that, that takes up, there's a good, you know, three weeks of my time to speak to every business owner literally in person. And I've been very successful in speaking with them, and they seem to, they seem to get it, to get the message and to get those paid. But that's just a little bit overview of that. My closure rate has been very successful, you know, since I've been here, since I've been in the city of Galt. I've been very pleased to deal with the citizens in Galt. I would like to commend the citizens of Galt for some of the things that I have to show up on or not on a very welcome basis, but everyone, the compliance rate has been phenomenal. I think everyone wants to comply, everyone wants to have a nice neighborhood. Some people are just, some people are unaware of the codes, and we do have a very high compliance rate. The investigation process of how my normal course of day would go, the complaints vary. They vary from whether it being proactive or reactive. And I'm, I think this year, I had more proactive cases than I've ever had. But that's just, that's just being aware and getting to know the city a little better and trying to disperse that throughout the city. Cases are normally addressed on a priority level scale, which one to four. One being health and safety. One, the fences are down and there's a pool in the backyard that has water in it, or someone stealing electricity, that would go, that would go to the one. I'm going to try to address that immediately. All the way down to four, and four would be, you know, such as a boat, a nice-looking boat in a driveway that doesn't have a bunch of junk stacked up in it, or a hole in it, or the tongue obstructing the sidewalk. You know, if any of those occur, that stepped up a little bit. But other than that, we try to, try to be fair to everyone. I understand times have been, the last couple of years, times have been tough, and a lot of people are having to bring their boats home instead of keeping them in the lake or the river. And I do understand that, and we try to work with the homeowner. If I do notice a violation, I, we have a, have a notice of violation that, what it does is it identifies the property, the address, it gives you the code of what you are in violation of, and it also gives a space to where I can write down for you how to remedy that situation. Normally, those will be given to the property owner if they're not home. I usually, you know, can put it right inside their door. I've never had any problems with anyone not complying just because they weren't home at the time I was there. Compliance time can vary depending on the severity of the issue. Most of the times, I try to give them 10 to 15 days. I try to incorporate a weekend in there, knowing if they, you know, most families work five days a week. And that's usually worked out pretty well. If not, then we can go a little longer. Sometimes the property owner will contact me and give me the situation. You know, Rusty, I can't do it in 10 days, but, you know, I have a, my mother's sick, or I work out of town, or, you know, we'll come up to a reasonable thing, and I usually ask them, you know, what works for you? You give me a reasonable amount of time, and maybe we can agree on something. And 90% of the time, they won't, they won't say, well, how about six months? You know, it's normally, you know, it's normally 25 maybe. You give me 25 days. And in that case, I don't have a problem with that, you know, especially if it's not a health and safety issue. If the property owner doesn't contact me, I have in my track-it system that I enter all my cases in, once I enter them into, I can give them a kickback date. And every morning I come in, I can, I can look at my computer, and it'll kick out to me that day's events of what I need to do a follow-up on. So normally, if the homeowner doesn't contact me, I'll go back out in 10 or 12 days, and if it's closed, if I drive by, see that everything has been taken care of, there's no other violations on that property, that case is closed. If that's not the case, we also have a tool called an administrative citation, which goes a step further than the notice of violation. Notice of violation, let them know what they needed to do. If that's not complied with, I have the authority to administer an administrative citation, which can fine them anywhere from $100 the first time to the second time, and being 200 the third time, 500, and then 500 anytime after that. And those can be administered, to my discretion, any way that I would, how I deem it. Normally, I've administered them $100, and will give them seven to eight days to come to that compliance. If they fail to do so, then it carries on and so on. Once again, to the, to the city of Galt, I have had not, I had not had to administrate or administer very many of those. I get, once again, very high compliance rate, but normally, if the first one is given out, that's about as far as they wanna take it. And the time to achieve compliance, absolutely, it differs on every situation. I think the next slide is going to definitely, I would like to address this because a lot of people have these questions. These are the questions that I get from most of the city employees. I've addressed this with the neighborhood watch people, the beautification committee. Dealing with vacant properties, which we all know that in the last few years has become, it's become an eyesore, it's become a problem nationwide. So I would like to go through step-by-step as briefly as I can to try to give you just an overview of how I deal with these vacant properties and what it takes to get it done. It's not just driving up to it and it gets taken care of. It is a very long process. The initial step, of course, is to identify the property. Identify it as being vacant, and that's sometimes normally a given, you know, there's no blinds in the windows, you can tell it's vacant, or you can go speak to the neighbors. Next step is to photograph the property. I try to document it as well as I can, and then post the property with a placard. It's a large red placard, and I'll show you on the next slide, stating that the property is under investigation. That slide definitely informs the neighborhood that if I get one call on that house, and I go show up and I place this red placard, that stops a lot of other calls that have to do with the exact same address. Because everyone can drive by that house, or they can plainly see, Rusty got it. So they don't usually call about the same property. I posted a notice of violation on the house also, stating what ordinance they are against and what they need to do to remedy it in case one of the house representatives or a bank financial representative comes to the house themselves, they can see that also. I need to, next, you need to research, to research the owner of it. And that, in the first part, became a very tedious thing, is to find the owner of a vacant property that someone walked out on, that there is no real estate sign, and there is, they just left. You speak to the neighbors, the neighbor said, "At 2:00, I heard the truck, and they're gone." And I have since, we've since developed a system, and there's also a website, it's a MERS, it's called MERS website, and it pulls up a lot of the financial institutions that are connected to that address. And once I contact them, I try to establish a compliance date from them, I try to get an email from them, a phone number, and that is my, that is my key to getting these done. Because 90% of the banks that do own houses here in Galt, that I've found out, have not been in the state of California. I've spoke to banks in Iowa, to Utah, to Kentucky, that their initial response to me is, "Your number 8,000 on the list, we'll see you when we see you." And if I would just sit back and let that happen, there would be a lot of places down here that would take up to five to six months. Believe me, I've spoke to other fellow code enforcement officers up and down the valley, and they were complaining to me, "It's taken me five, taken me five months to get this taken care of." It's never taken me longer than a month and a half on every property that I've did except for two, and I'll show you those two. But it's, it's just tenacity of literally calling them every three days, sending them an email every two or three days, and trying to stay a step ahead of it, and eventually they'll get tired of hearing from me and send someone else. When that person shows up from the bank, then it's usually on a rotation. So everything that I've seen so far, once they send a property management team out to take care of it, they try to show up at least once a month after that. I don't have to contact them. They will keep it on a rotation, so that's, it's very helpful. Compliance, like I said, once again, can take up one to three months. If there is no activity at all, there is a punishment level. I mean, I can absolutely find the banks. I think some of them, some of them know that it's going to happen. But fortunately for me, like I said, I haven't had to send those citations out to many banks. I've established rapport with one person from each bank, and I find that that's the best thing to do, because now I act as if that one person that works at that bank is my best friend. And if I can communicate them, communicate with them on a personal level, I've seen a lot of results. This right here is the notice of violation that I was talking about. It's just a big red placard that lets it know that the house is being monitored by me, and it lets everyone else in the neighborhood know that we do have it under control, and hopefully that, you know, it wouldn't be much longer, and they're more than welcome to give me a call on that, and I can keep them updated. Another aspect of my job is the code enforcement task force, and that's been into effect since 2006. I think, I think Mr. Cruz and myself were one of the first to ever go out together. I think Marco's one of the first officers to go with me. It's a monthly task force effort, and it consists of myself, our building inspector, Brian Clark from the CSD, from the fire department, and usually a member from the Galt Police Department. And we just, it's a random, it's a random outing, try to target some places throughout town, and just drive it and proactively try to enforce different ordinances and talk to the people. The community seems to receive it very well. We've had a lot of people just come out and speak to us. They wanna know what we're doing in their, on the street, and it's very much appreciative, and we've had a lot of results from it so far from the task force that has continued, and we do get a lot of results. If there's a garage conversion, if there's people have questions about building, if they have questions about, do I need to obtain a permit, all the way up to cars that could possibly be stolen, to fire hazards that could be seen from the investigator. It's all covered, and it's a very good, it's a very good effort from everyone, and we do receive a lot of positive feedback. The next thing that I'm also involved in here lately has been the neighborhood watch meetings. I have teamed up with TJ Godati, who is a crime prevention officer, and we have, we have went around and spoke to the established neighborhood watch groups, as well as trying to establish new neighborhood watch groups. And TJ lets them, he tells them what, how to get it formed, and what it's all about, and, you know, two TJ's performance, he does a very, very good job. TJ, I would like to commend TJ on that, because I've sent him on enough of those neighborhood watch meetings now that TJ is a big asset to the police department. I can speak for TJ on that, he does a good job, and these neighborhood watch people love TJ to death. And once he's finished, they have, they've all had questions for me as far as the foreclosures in their, you know, in their neighborhood, the blight in their neighborhood, different kind of property maintenance questions for me, and it's very well received, because they sometimes, you know, they don't get that answer, or they don't know where to go. So that's, once again, that's another, that's another positive thing that we're involved in. And these are here, just to sum this up, these are just a few before and afters on these foreclosures or these walkaways or abandons. Some take very little time, some of these, the ones that I'm gonna show you, they were my hardest cases because these were literally ghost houses. This house particularly is on Fourth Avenue, I believe, and it was literally a ghost house. No one, no one knew who lived there, no one, it was nowhere to be found, and that took quite the door knocking. I think I was three streets over, after knocking on 85 doors, someone finally said, "I know that guy that used to live there," and there we go. This one right here was another, now that it's taken care of, on the after picture of the little tree that's laying down, it's now gone also, but that went quite a while of, once again, no owner, no bank. Once a bank took ownership of it, they've been very good about keeping it up. This one here over on Dover was a main problem also. And once again, it, that takes, that's many, that's many emails and many phone calls right there, just for one house. You know, these could take three to four months to try to get taken care of. Now that they've, now that they've got it, it's stayed. This right here, I put this in just to show the building aspect of it, I'm also a building inspector, so that once again takes up a lot of my time, and I try to stay with John often on the new projects, such as Odd Fellows and Galt Place. I try to go there as much as I can with him, and to study the plans with him, and to listen to the engineer speak, just so I know exactly what's going on if John would have to, you know, if something happened to, you know, that he couldn't make it, or there were questions about it. So, and that's very interesting to me also to see that. This right here is just another do-not-enter, unsafe-to-occupy sign. The truck on the right particularly, it ran through the guy's front yard, and that truck is sticking out of his house. The main beam of that garage is resting on the roof of that truck. So it was just a, just another aspect of the things that I encounter on a day-to-day basis. This right here was, this is both before pictures. This person has a little bit of land, and you can see what they chose to do with it. This is what I chose to turn it into. So, very proud of the people that try to comply. This right here is the typical neighborhood house. On the left, took a little bit of coaxing, maybe a little more than others. But on the right, as you can see, and they did fairly decent, I'm trying to keep it up, so I'm very proud of them. Once again, on the left is just a foreclosure walkaway over by the Galt Market, and it has since now been well taken care of on a regular basis. This right here is our commercial area. This is a commercial dumpster, both of them on the same lot. Matter of fact, it's over there by Save Mark. And it was easy access off of Bay Street, I believe. I'm not saying it's so much of Save Mark at all, but it was easy access to where it was people coming off the street, maybe people coming from Lodi or Elk Grove possibly, because you just have to drop off the exit, and there it is, the dumpsters and the access. And we did find a lot of trash over there that did not belong to the grocery store. This is what it's since, after much hard work, that's now what it looks like. And I just went by there today, and it remains that way to this day, so hopefully it stays that way. This right here was just a boneyard for heavy equipment and semi-trucks. On the left, it was so many that it was amazing. I went and spoke to the property owner, he was completely unaware that that could take place within three days. That has been, it turned into the picture on the right, literally within three days. He was very, very cooperative in getting those out of there, and had no ill will toward, he didn't wanna be, he didn't wanna be that person to have that. So, anyway, I believe that's the end of what I have for you tonight. That's, like I say, that's just a little brief window into things that I do take care of among probably 75 or 80 other different things a day, but very receptive to the But very receptive to the people and gone, and I appreciate it. Any, any questions?
Any questions? Anybody? I'm sure there's a lot of good comments. Thank you so much, Russ.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda is finance, second quarter update.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and members of the community. This evening, I'd like to give you just some highlights of the second quarter of the current fiscal year. As previously advised during these trying economic times, it's important to keep everyone informed on the financial condition of the city. As you know, the general fund is the primary fund used by the city to conduct their operations. And some of the key revenue indicators include the property taxes, sales tax, and building activity. Revenues year-to-date in the general fund are approximately twenty-nine percent of budgeted revenues, which is low, but that is typical. We get property taxes, we get an advance in December, but most of that money comes in January and February. So, speaking of property taxes, it makes up about twenty-seven percent of general fund revenues. And as previously advised, our assessed value of the county basically gives us updated information. We keep track of those estimates on increases, and most recently, decreases in our assessed value. We have projected that our budget will actually decrease by five percent from actual amounts received last fiscal year. On a positive note, though, we did receive our first advance, and based on that advance, we do expect that the budget amount will be actually realized. So, no recommended changes for property taxes at this point. On other taxes, the largest component of other taxes is our sales tax, and that makes up about sixteen percent of our general fund revenues. Sales tax, our, our budget's actually eight percent decreased from last fiscal year. But we did actually see a decrease, again, eight percent from quarter to quarter, but sales tax actually increased from a year ago quarter to quarter, and it actually increased by fourteen percent, so that was definitely good news. We will, yes.
Before you leave that, one of the things that I noticed was the decrease was in the industry, the industry group. Do, do we think of that as one more unemployment? Or you gave us the percentage, but dollar-wise, do you think we're going to be feeling that effect?
Actually, we saw the decrease in every industry group. So if we had consumer goods and fuel and, and restaurants, it was actually, we actually saw a decrease in every industry group. So we actually projected an eight percent decrease, so we're right there. The good news was that it actually didn't, was not more than the eight percent. And the good news that a year ago, we actually increased by fourteen percent. There were some one-time corrections, so that's definitely good news for our part. We will actually be coming back and recommending that will be increased in our estimate for sales taxes here. We were seeing that, we saw that decrease in this last quarter, but we're hoping that we're actually seeing a positive growth in that sales tax. As far as other agencies, typically, that's the money that we get from the state, motor vehicles included in there. But what happened in this last quarter, we received various law enforcement grants. So we did receive about forty thousand dollars more on two safety, on two public safety grants, so that was good news in that revenue category. Current services and charges, basically, building and planning fees are low. We do expect that we will be revising those estimates downwards by about thirty-five thousand dollars during the midterm budget process. The keynotes under general fund, from the operating side, on the expenditure side, we have expended approximately forty-seven percent of annualized amounts, fifty percent is where we should be, so we have fifty-three percent available. All of the personnel amounts are within the annualized budget, so that's definitely good news, with the exception of employee group insurance, which we know we pay one month in advance. So everything is within annualized amounts. On the maintenance side and on capital side, amounts are within budgeted amounts as well, with two exceptions. Some, some departments have made some one-time purchases already, and some departments have actually entered into contracts that would extend for the entire fiscal year. So some of them are a little bit on the high end, but we could actually explain the reasons why those amounts are higher than budgeted amounts. On the culture and recreation side, we have collected fifty-two percent of our revenues that have been budgeted, so that's good news. The Galt Market makes up about eighty-four percent of the total culture and recreation, culture and recreation revenues. And again, we have collected about fifty-three percent of market revenues budgeted. So we're a little bit ahead of the fifty percent is where we estimated it to be. On the expenditure side, again, on the culture and recreation fund, they are all within the annualized budget amount. They've actually expended about forty-four percent of rev, of their expenditures. Again, annualized amount would be at about fifty percent, so good news there. On other funds, just briefly, on our enterprise fund, there was an increase on our sewer fund by about sixteen thousand dollars. We received rents for two prior fiscal years, which was an amount that was outstanding, so that will be an adjustment during the midterm process. On the expenditure side, we're within annualized budget, with the exception of sewer fund, and we do have some long-term commitments that happen in summer for some capital projects. On gas tax and transportation funds, we know that we will be receiving some of our gas tax funds in April due to the lack of state budget, and they had delayed some payments. We anticipated that once the budget was approved, so we're okay there. We also received some good news that Greg actually shared with us, that there were some increased amounts from Seco, Seco for LTF and some pedestrian money, so we're estimating that those revenues will actually increase by about eighty-five thousand dollars in the current fiscal year, so good news there. On the expenditure side, we have expended a little bit more than budgeted amounts in the TDA funds and in the STA. Again, we have some construction and some projects underway, so those are within accepted amounts, so we have been taking a look at those. Measure R, safety tax, the current amount was budgeted to decrease by eight percent, basically following the same trend for the city's sales tax. Revenues collected from the last quarter actually increased by one percent. So not a decrease, there was actually increase. And they actually increased from the same quarter a year ago by eighteen percent. Some corrections, but again, that's definitely good news. So at this point, we have collected seventy-two percent of budgeted amounts in Measure R, so we will definitely be making some changes, recommended increases to the budget amounts in Measure R. So that's good news. I know that Councilmember Singleton actually asked for some information, so that is attached to this report as well, on the revenue side and on the expenditure side. On the expenditure side, both personnel maintenance, maintenance amounts are within annualized budget amounts in the capital category. We have fully expended those amounts primarily because we purchased a vehicle already, and then we have encumbered or issued a purchase order to the company to equip that vehicle. Couple more. Impact fees, we know that there is a decline in the construction market activity, and they are the hardest hit right now. We did actually receive one payment in the month of December from DNS Development. However, we do estimate that the revenues will actually be decreased during the budget process, primarily because, as I'm told, five single-family dwelling units that were estimated to be constructed will no longer occur. On the redevelopment side, basically the primary revenue source, we'll talk a little bit more about them in just a moment, but tax increment is the primary revenue source. On the expenditure side, we are within annualized budget amounts, but we haven't paid the state their money yet, or based on the state takeaway, which will occur in May, and that's estimated about two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars. And we haven't made any payments to the CFY project as well. Other funds are close to budgeted amounts, no huge variances or swings. That concludes my staff report for this evening. We will continue to monitor the revenues expenditures and try to provide that information to you timely. There is no action for council this evening. It's basically an informational report, but if you have any questions, then I'd be more than glad to try to address those this evening.
Yes, I do. First of all, you do, you do such a great job. She's so good at this. She, she does this in her sleep. I appreciate the report you sent to staff and to council, your quarterly reports. The, the thing I noticed about this report for Measure R is the, it's a generalization of expenditures from Measure R. And what I was looking for in, in getting information on Measure R is, is a more detailed list of what we are spending out of Measure R for more transparency for the, for the Galt citizens that approve this tax. So I, I want them to be able to see what they're spending their money on, in a better, rather than just a general. Is there some way we can do that, straight from the, from the committee? Should we appoint somebody from the committee to do that? Or how, how do you want to proceed with that? I'm asking you, would it be easier for you? Because I don't want, you're busy enough at this, and I understand that. But I want to see if, okay, if we buy a car, if we buy light bars for a police car, tires for a police car, I, I would like to see what we spent on that. And so if the community wants to know what we spent on, we can answer, answer the question.
Well, it's just that under maintenance and operations, you want to know every tire and every, under that.
Yeah, I'd like to know a little bit more detail, yeah. Waiter, go.
We, we could provide, we, we do have information within the computerized system that can tell you that in a certain line item, there was an amount paid to a certain company. But what that item was for, that is not necessarily in that report. We could say we issued a claim, we paid an amount to Save Mark, for instance. But we would not be able to tell you if that was for batteries, or if it was for a pencil. So we could tell you who we paid and the amount that was paid, but not necessarily what the purchase was, unless there was a purchase order for everything, because on the purchase order, you actually itemize what the item is, what the contract, what the obligation is. So if you're looking for that level of detail, that would really be at, at the department level, I, I would imagine. I'm, I'm not sure.
Right.
That's what's available through our system. There's really two reports. There's the vendor report, which is what Inez is referring to, and there's an expenditure report that has it broken down into different categories. In order to get deeper than that, would require additional staff work that we don't have available just within our systems. It would take manually going through each item and breaking it down.
How about if we start with the vendor's report? Would that be okay?
That one we have available, that we can certainly make, it's, we can make available to the council.
We could certainly provide that. Is that something that you would like us to start to initiate and provide to the Measure R committee?
If we could.
We can certainly do that. We can do that as part of the monthly reports when those are generated, then we can go ahead and generate. And I think we just actually had a training session on various reports that are generated, so that's clearly one of those reports that is a demand report that is available.
Well, good, then we can work out that training.
We'll certainly follow up on that one, then.
Thank you.
I make a suggestion.
Sheldon?
May I make a suggestion? Maybe a council member through Jason, you, the three or four of you, whatever you feel you need to have a secondary meeting. And I, I agree with what you're asking for, but I think maybe you guys could streamline it, and then you can come back with some kind of report through Jason.
That's why I want to go ahead and just, we can do that, or just start with that report he suggested.
What we can do is if the next quarterly report provides a vendor's update with that information, and see if that satisfies that, that request, and if there's some additional information, we can go from there.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this report? Not, I would like a motion to, that's the report.
It's informational only.
It's informational.
No formal action is required for this, for this report. Just receipt of the report, that's correct.
Okay, next, still finance department.
Proposed 2011 tax allocation bond.
Good evening again, Mayor, councilmembers and members of the community. I'm sure many of you have heard that the governor has proposed the elimination of redevelopment agencies. There was a resolution that was approved this evening as well. It's staff's recommendation that we continue with the course of action that we have been undertaking since November, as you'll recall. In November, we actually asked for authority to incur some costs for various projects or initiate some soft costs. So that happened in November, so it's staff's recommendation that we proceed under that course. We have projects that we want to undertake. And so I want to present the report this evening, that it is staff's recommendation that the city council adopt a resolution approving the issuance of redevelopment, or by the redevelopment agency of bonds, in an amount not exceed seventeen million dollars, and basically authorize the staff to perform other necessary paperwork. Just a little bit of background on this. What we anticipate to issue the bonds for is for two purposes. One of them is to repay the current outstanding bonds. In 2002, we issued eight-point-seven million in tax allocation bonds. There still is an outstanding principal amount of just about three-point-three million dollars. So we will be refunding those amounts, we'll be repaying those outstanding amounts. And secondly, we'll be using about eleven million dollars for new projects. And those bonds will have a term of approximately twenty-three years. Well, let me tell you about the financing approach, and jumping ahead of myself here. To accomplish the debt financing, we're looking at using tax allocation bonds in cooperation with the Capital Improvements Authority. The bonds will have a maturity, or a term of approximately twenty-three years. We'll issue about fifteen-point-five million dollars per amount of bonds. We have set a couple of higher limits that we'll go over in just a moment on this, but we do expect that the per amount will be about fifteen-point-five million, and have about eleven million dollars, like I said earlier, for projects in the redevelopment agency. We are hoping that the bonds will be rated triple C plus rated. The actual interest rate will be determined once we go out to the, and price the bonds, which we expect to happen during the week of February fourteenth, and hopefully closed shortly thereafter around February twenty-fourth. Creation of the financing team. The city, we actually developed a financing team when we were working on the West Village Streamline upgrade project, and we thought we were going to be selling bonds at that point. But what we did is perform an analysis and, and tried to determine what the best product, at what, at the best price that we could provide. And it actually ended up being the State Revolving Fund. But the team that we have was so responsive to the needs of the community and what we need at the time, that we brought them back and asked for their continued involvement for this project. The city manager will be authorized to enter into agreements with this team. They are all qualified to perform the services that are being requested this evening, and will do so at a competitive price. So I would like to introduce the team to you this evening. The underwriter, if you can just please come up to the podium, I would appreciate that. Our underwriter will be Ralph Holmes with De La Rosa and Company. Our bond counsel is Dave Fama, with the firm of Jones Hall. Our financial advisor is Marshall Lynn with Urban Futures. And our trustee is not here this evening, and that will be Bank of New York Trust Company. And if you can just hang up here just for a moment, please.
Absolutely.
And so summary of the documents this evening is we have the preliminary official statement, and that's basically the offering document, which will be presented to the potential investors. We have the indenture of trust, which basically defines the payment terms and conditions of the bond. We have the bond purchase contract, which someone did ask me about earlier, and it basically provides the terms and conditions by which the underwriter will purchase the bond. And then we have continuing disclosure certificate, and basically tells us that every year, we have to provide various updates and advise everyone about those conditions. So just in a recap, some of the parameters for the financing is the total maximum principal amount will be seventeen million. Again, we think it's going to be about fifteen-five, but we're trying to set things at the higher limit just so we have some flexibility when we are at, at the market. The underwriter's discount will not exceed one-point-two percent. The annual interest rate will not exceed nine-point-seven-five. Admittedly, that's on the high end, but we think that will be in a range for the exempt portion of about six-seventy-five, maybe seven-twenty-five, seven-point-five. The taxable will be about a six-point-oh to about eight-point-five. That's where we think we're going to end up. But again, we're setting things at the higher limit just so we have authority. We'll see what happens when we're out at the market. Eleven million dollars will be the net proceeds for the redevelopment agency to pursue projects and programs. Again, we'll be refinancing the 2002 bonds in about three-point-three million dollars. We will be going up to the market around the fourteenth, pricing it, and closing by the end of February, around February twenty-fourth. We'll have a estimated annual debt service payment of about one million three-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars, which is being paid exclusively from tax increment, and with a final maturity date in 2033. That concludes my staff report this evening. But if the city manager has any comments, or if you have any questions from me or any of the members of the financing team, then we will be more than happy to address those this evening.
I just want to make one comment. I think what Inez and her financing team has accomplished is nothing short of a miracle. You know, in this, with the kind of redevelopment agencies, and within the fight for our lives, timing and speed are everything to get this, this accomplished and get our funding. And so I know there have been a lot of late nights from everybody involved on this, and so I really appreciate and want to recognize all those that were involved in this process, particularly Inez taking the lead. And so, you know, it's one of those things, I made sure that it was a priority, and everybody took it, and has just run with it. It's, you know, what normally takes ninety days was seven, thirty days, and we're at the leading edge of almost every other redevelopment agency in the state. And so I'm really proud of the, the work that's been done by your staff.
As we all are proud of.
Very, yeah, very proud.
So if anybody has any questions for me or any of the kind of things.
From the audience, would you like to hear those questions first? Before we address the council? Can we sit down, I know?
Do you want to call the first one? Yes, Rick Walters. Walters, excuse me.
Can I put this down here?
Yeah.
Rick Walters, I live in the city of the Galt. I just got a couple of questions on this. This proposal that you have is for new projects, and some projects that are in old town and everything. everything else, but my question was, is have you ever considered using the redevelopment money for the unfunded mandates? And maybe you can answer my question, please?
I think I would refer that to our city manager.
Not sure what unfunded mandate you're referring to.
Maybe more detail.
We do have unfunded mandates that the Public Works tells us all the time, that the city has to pay for, so the citizens have to pay for it, like the upgrade account, and arsenic, and so on and so forth. Those are unfunded mandates that we have to do. And I'm just a little curious, if the council has considered using that redevelopment money for those kind of things? Because if you go ahead and get all this money set for all this stuff, and what happens down the road in ten or fifteen years, and we get a bunch of unfunded mandates, and are you going to take and tack all that money on the homeowner itself? Or are we going to get any help from the redevelopment money, if you live within that agency area? That's my question.
Redevelopment law is very specific on things that you can and cannot use those funds for, and we have looked at various infrastructure projects, which is included and anticipated as part of this. And so we're looking at, you know, every available project that meets the definition and needs of the redevelopment agency, which the primary purpose of redevelopment is to eliminate life within the redevelopment agency, is we're looking, so we're looking mainly at projects that would help the city to accomplish those goals.
So helping with the unfunded mandates, or water meters, or upgrade of the treatment plant, or the live oak pump station, and stuff like that, that's solely going to have to be the cost of the rate payer, is that what you're telling me? And we're not going to get any help from the, for the infrastructure needs, from the redevelopment agency? Is that what you're telling me?
Well, we'd have, I'd have to talk to you specifically about what projects you're curious about, but some of the ones you might, would not be eligible, but there are some infrastructures that would be, that would be eligible, depending on the criteria.
That's fine, but I noticed on here, everything is, everything is to buy property, and you know, everything else, and I'm just a little curious why you haven't considered that. I mean, I believe a year and a half ago, I asked one of the staffs from Sacramento County, if he could use the redevelopment money for those kind of structures, and he said, yes, you can. So I'm a little curious as to why you haven't considered that, and here to help some of the existing residents now.
I think we're hearing what you're suggesting, and I'm sure we'll-
Will you take that into consideration, please?
I'm sure we all will. We hear you.
Well, if you approve this tonight, will there be any chance of sliding those in? Or whenever you get ready to approve this, will there be any chances of giving the rate payers a little help in that area? That's my question, really.
Well, if I'm not, correct me if I'm wrong, but these are just generalizations, they're not specific?
I thought you were going to go out and get fifteen or seventeen million dollars?
That, that is true, but the way-
That's for a specific, to buy Semerhorn property, and so on and so forth, right? You're going to do that, right? I mean, that's what you're considering.
We are considering, but it's not a done deal.
Yeah, there's a very broad definition of projects in the staff report tonight, and so as we move forward over the next several years, we will define and implement those projects. And so there is still, you know, prioritization that goes on. We have several projects that are already identified, that are already in the capital improvement project, a program such as the Central Quarter Project, a railroad property, as well as some other ones that are already identified. But there will be an opportunity to continue to refine that list, as we move forward with redevelopment projects.
So, so I just want to, so I get this straight in my head. You will consider these projects, right?
Every, before, before we move forward with any project, it will require council approval, and it will come back to the city council for discussion.
Okay, then, then I need to address my, my question to the council. Will you consider these, these types of things, like water meter, arsenic, the upgrade account, the upgrade for the tertiary plant? Will you consider using some of the redevelopment money for those areas?
I would answer you, Mr. Walters, in saying that the reason we have this public opinion is so that we can hear.
Okay.
And of course, we may not necessarily agree with you, but we are here to listen and to consider what anyone gets up here and shares with us.
I just don't want you to, you know, blow it off someplace, and just not even bring it up and talk about it, or, you know, have an open discussion about it, is what I'm hoping for.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, thank you.
Flotterback?
I would just like to say, read a few lines here, for you to consider, think about. These are nerve-wracking times for municipal bond investors. In an unprecedented move, debt raider Moody's last month assigned a negative outlook to the entire asset class amid the deteriorating condition of state, county, and city finances. A destabilized economy and reduced housing prices can weaken a municipal, municipality's financial health, throwing its ability to repay debt into doubt. If a municipality's revenue mainly stems from real estate tax, declining property values would have an adverse effect on returns and credit quality. The city is already in financial straits and conditions, and home prices will continue to deteriorate for the foreseeable future. The city is already in a downward spiral, working only four days a week. A bond sale could possibly put Galt in a position to file for bankruptcy, something this council should consider. The citizens of Galt need to weigh in on this issue, and express their opinion on it. The city of Lodi, citizens formed a group, and they fought redevelopment. Lodi does not have any redevelopment. Now, they didn't fight it because it was all good. All I've heard here tonight is, what's good? There's a lot of things about redevelopment, it takes away money from, from certain areas and spends it on others. I'll give you an example. We used tax dollars, four million dollars for the senior building on, what is it, Fourth Street? And then we used a million and a half dollars for the booster. Neither one of those projects did anything for the citizens of Galt. And I thought that's what, part of what redevelopment was, was to do, was to, not just to help the city, but to help the citizens of Galt. Anyway, think about it, and I appreciate it. Begin.
Thank you, Mr. Flotterback. Are there any more?
I would ask council members if they have any comments or questions of these gentlemen who've been standing up for quite a while.
No questions? Councilman Singleton?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
I'll second.
And we need a first.
Oh, I thought you were making the motion. I'll make the motion to mail some second. Make the motion, we adopt this tax allocation bond proposal for 2011.
I'll second.
Roll call. Pardon me?
We're just doing the first round of the election.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on this before we vote? Not, then I can call for a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Okay, what's next?
The city-owned bus, Public Works Department.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. At the December twenty-first meeting, council requested that staff bring back estimates for the repairs to the city-owned bus to place it back in service. Depending upon the estimated repair cost, council could at that point undertake possible discussions relative to placing the bus back in service, or ultimate disposition of the bus. My central shop staff affirmed the cursory review of the bus and inspection, and determined that the only apparent immediate need to put it back in service is replacing of a battery at approximate cost of about two hundred and fifty dollars. Although not needed immediately, we also recommend that all four tires be replaced at a cost of about eight hundred dollars. The staff report indicates, or didn't give the total cost of the bus, that it was purchased with city manager discretionary funds. I've since found out, that it was actually purchased with twenty-four hundred dollars' worth of O-six funds, and only a thousand dollars of discretionary funds. So total purchase price of thirty-four hundred dollars, and I apologize for that oversight. Estimated annual cost to maintain the bus, about eighty-five hundred dollars, and that's based upon maintenance cost from store transit for the newer buses. Although maintained to a higher level, but the bus we questioned is ten years old, and has two hundred and seventy-five thousand miles on it, so it's going to require more maintenance as we go forward. Very preliminary estimate of the value of the bus is about fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars. And that's not based on a blue book, that's based on about three hours of searching the internet for something comparable, what we think a fair market value would be. I can get further information if council still chooses that option. In order to facilitate your discussion, we put some options in the staff report for you. The first is you reactivate the bus for some city service or program. You could also donate it to another agency or charity, or you could sell it at an auction. If you want to consider putting it back into service for the city program, I would caution the council in that, to do so, you'd probably have to reinstall the wheelchair lift that was removed, that we still have, and that the driver most likely would be required to obtain a Class B license, most likely with the passenger endorsement. That concludes my report. I would have to answer any questions you might have.
Does the council have any suggestions or ideas regarding this bus?
Yes, I do, if I might.
Councilman Singleton?
You knew, you know I had something, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
If I might make a suggestion, and this is, you know, of course, of the council, I would like to see us, because it's just, it's too much to run and upkeep this vehicle, in my eyes, and too many miles on it. So it wouldn't be a benefit even to reactivate for any city program. Is, my opinion would be to go ahead and auction this or sell this privately, and then take that money and donate it to a youth sport program evenly, so that we might help some of these, again, it's all about kids for me, is to, someplace, somewhere we can help some kids play some sports that not necessarily can always afford to buy the uniforms, to pay their fees, to play soccer, or baseball, or whatever happens to be. That's just my suggestion. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, please.
Yeah. No, Randy was just asking, asking a question. I think what you're talking about is making sports affordable for some of the youth in the community, and we actually do have a program, that's a scholarship program for people that are kind of low income, and can't afford to participate in some of these sports programs that the city, the city operates. So if the council desired to put some of those funds into that, that scholarship program, that would certainly be an eligible and worthwhile expense.
Yeah, that, that sounds like something I was looking for, just something to help keep these kids off the streets, and give them something to do, is what I'm looking for. And I mean, if we can sell it, like I said, or auction it privately.
We can try.
And I think I understood we used some, didn't we use some parts and rec money to purchase it? O-six fund, so that-
So it could go back into the O-six fund. And if you want, we could, it could either go two places. It could just go into the O-six fund for general parts and rec services, or if you wanted to earmark it for a specific program, you could direct the funds to be used for that as well.
Can we make that decision tonight? Do you want to make, well, is there any other discussions?
Yeah.
Or suggestions, or do you want to think about it?
Well, I have a question.
Okay.
Did you say, Greg, that it came out of two funding?
It's my understanding, it's two funds. One was the O-six fund for twenty-four hundred dollars, and a thousand dollars came out of the city manager's discretionary fund, which I believe is the general fund.
That's true.
I mean, we can move money, but does it make more sense to prorate that back into, like, parks and rec and the general fund?
I think that's the perspective, funds we're supposed to, aren't we?
Yeah, I think we, I'm just, I'm asking the question, I guess.
Well, you're, you're likely not going to get thirty-four hundred dollars of this thing.
No, I mean, we only get-
If you get the hundred dollars, I mean, don't you have to- I think the council could certainly prorate it. I don't know of any restrictions that would require you to do that. I think if you wanted to direct the funds to go into one of the other funds, that you would be, that would be fine. So you could direct it all to go into O-six, all to go into O-one, or you could prorate it, as you suggested, I think any of them would be suitable. Randy can kind of jump in if people otherwise-
He doesn't want any part of it.
Actually, we do have a speaker sheet on that, too. We might want to weigh in on Mr. Baldwin's suggestion.
If I could, while he's walking up here, just remind council, this is a very cursory review, I'm not a bus salesman. A store had no interest in this bus. I didn't find anything even remotely close to this high mileage, in about three hours of looking, so I'm not sure we're even successful-
You're going to get a lot of money.
As we can, we certainly can try.
Yeah. One of the comments that I would want to provide is, if we receive any funds, twenty-four hundred dollars or less, and those could go into the O-six fund. In our reserve policy, it talks about, any amount that we do receive from a successful sale will go back to the fund that actually purchased the item. So there is a restriction there. So any amount over the twenty-four hundred dollars should be placed back in the general fund, but any amounts within that twenty-four hundred dollars, I believe, could appropriately be reported within the O-six fund.
Okay. Thank you.
A lot of money here, we're trying to figure out what to do with. Mr. Baldwin.
Hello, pal. Matt Baldwin again. I'm a concerned citizen about a bus tonight. I was at the transportation meeting. It was the largest turnout I think Galt's had, maybe ever, on a transportation meeting here at the chambers. And I brought up one little suggestion, and I'm telling you, you just, you don't have to do anything with it, but think about it. It's a little brainstorming. You have a bus that needs a little bit of fixing up, well, whatever. And Galt would benefit by having a weekend bus. Now, what would you do with a used bus that runs, but you don't want to drive it a lot of miles? I'm suggesting, especially during the summer, to test it out, let it become a trolley bus. Paint it, make it look good. I'd even suggest putting a bell on it, like a trolley. Using it approximately four hours a day on Saturday, and four hours a day on Sunday, to help the businesses in Galt. Now, how can you help the businesses in Galt? Well, a lot of people would get on this trolley bus, and go around it, stop only at the shopping center, or where there's business, come back to West Side, stop at businesses, Old Town, maybe Lincoln Way, Save Mart area, and it would just continually make it a spin-around golf. This would be painted, it would hit the news, a lot of the businesses might even contribute to something like this, if it's going to make them a few bucks. Your investment is probably fairly minimal compared to what you might be able to get from the businesses to have something like this. And you could even charge people maybe two dollars to get on it, or five dollars, and you can get on and get off, you can get on and get off for that four hours. It's not too bad. You got to think about this. Now, San Diego's doing this in a much larger thing, but, and I think Lodi might even have a little one going on, but Galt's small enough, and it's separated by ninety-nine, Highway ninety-nine, and we've been trying to get the people on the east side, come to the west, and vice versa. Well, what's another way to do it? With four hours a day on Saturday, and four hours on Sunday? And it'd be the talk of the town. People would get on, get off, get on, get off, and they could buy a two-day pass, or a month's pass, if you want to try, just try it for the summer. If it works, look out. You might just find something here that, that might start paying off, and you could get a real trolley. And I know Greg would love that, because of the maintenance on it. He's got something to do. And it's just another idea, that you have a product that could be used part-time, I just, I think it'd be great for Galt, for four hours a day, during the summertime only, to test it out. And when you have the, anything going on in Lincoln Way, maybe on Thursday nights, or maybe Old Town, or something like that, where you have a farmer's market, wouldn't that be ideal, to stop by there maybe, and drop them off, take them up, on an exception on one night? I'm just suggesting this, this is what you call brainstorming, just don't throw it into the garbage yet. Think about it. Twenty-five hundred dollars is nothing, really, but just think of the things you could get out of it with the businesses. They would love it. Ask them before you do anything with this bus, and see what they have to say about it. They might even give you money to buy a new bus for something like this. Anyway, you got it.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin, for that vision.
I think that was a great vision, Al. It's good vision, I, I do agree, but the next thing we'd start getting into is, who are we going to have drive the bus, and their credentials, and how we're going to pay them, and that kind of thing. You only do it there, it's adding to that, the cost of it. It's, you know, you only do it there, it's adding to that, uh, the cost of keeping that bus.
Okay. So, are we ready to make a motion or some direction here?
I mean, if we want to take this into consideration, Al's suggestion, I'd be willing to, I mean, let's, let's just do that if we want to do that. If not, then I would make the motion that we go ahead and auction or sell this vehicle and allocate funds appropriately.
So, when you say allocate the funds appropriately, it would be that the first twenty-four hundred dollars would go to O-six for the scholarship program, anything above that would go into the general fund.
Yeah. Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
I am making the motion. If that's your motion, I'll second. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion, or have we talked about this enough? Okay, I think we're going to do a roll call vote because it involves money.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Okay, now we know what to do with the bus. Do we, do we have any other, um-
Just a point of clarification.
Yeah.
Right now, the bus doesn't run.
Right.
It needs a battery. It needs two hundred and fifty dollars for a battery to be able to take it somewhere to auction it. We could have them tow it there, but it probably won't go for very much. So, if somebody has some money to pay for a battery, that might be a good thing to have council approve, a good investment toward trying to sell it.
We should tow it.
We borrowed a battery from one of our generators in order to test it.
Can we take that?
Okay. Even though council had to prove it or not.
Yeah.
I, I think we have some discretionary money somewhere that we can use for that, so, do you need direction or, okay.
You got it.
We have any written communication? If not, we are going to adjourn to the redevelopment agency.
Thank you. Oh, I'm doing, I'm sorry. Board members, Powers, here. Singleton?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Any public comment?
I have no speaker sheet.
Are you sure? You're looking around.
I'm sure I can, I found my-
Okay. What is that agenda?
We have two items, approval of the minutes of the meeting of January eighteenth, two thousand eleven, and a special meeting of January twenty-first, two thousand eleven, and approval of the redevelopment agency warrants.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Next. Let me read it. Next, under departmental proposed two thousand eleven tax allocation bonds.
Good evening. Um, at this point, this would be the action that would be required of the redevelopment agency, and it's basically, um, authorizing the issuance of the bonds in an amount not to exceed the seventeen million dollar principal amount, and approving, authorizing, and directing, um, the execution of the various documents, the trust indenture, the authorization to sell the bonds, approving the official statement or the preliminary official statement, and other matters as required to ensure the sale of this bond is successful. So, with that, if you have any questions, it's basically the same information, but this would be the action required from the redevelopment agency.
Are there any questions or discussions from council members?
No.
So, is there a motion?
Okay, I move, I move to accept the resolution.
Second.
For the second.
Uh, roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Now, we're going to adjourn from the redevelopment and reconvene to the capital improvement, improvements authority, and I'm going to turn the gavel over to the city clerk. Oh, wait, we'll have roll call first.
Okay, board members, Powers? Uh, uh, here. Singleton?
Yeah.
Shelton?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Public comment?
I have no speaker sheet.
Uh, okay, reorganization, election of the chair, and that is going to be conducted by the city clerk.
Okay, do you have any nominations for chair of the authority?
I nominate Barbara Payne.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, I will close nomination and call for the vote for Barbara as chair. Um, not vice mayor, authority member Powers?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Now, next is to elect a vice chair. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Mary Lou Powers.
Are there any other nominations? Not? We will call for the vote.
You can go last because it's you. Okay, this is to appoint, um, authority member Powers as vice chair. Uh, Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we need to appoint the secretary. What are the duties of this secretary?
Take your minutes and do your agendas.
Seriously?
Seriously. To do the authority's agendas in minutes.
And, can that be, are we going to have a lot of the- Could that be the city clerk?
Yes, it could, if you so desire.
We could just appoint that person.
Don't let her out of that one. I nominate Liz Aguirre.
It's just an appointment.
It's an appointment, yeah.
That's okay.
You just all have to agree.
Just point.
Okay, I got it. So, there's the consensus to appoint, um, city clerk Liz Aguirre as secretary?
Okay, we'll continue taking your minutes then.
Okay, thank you.
Chief for that.
Well, I'm kind of amazed at, like, how often do these people meet since the last one was December fourth, two thousand one. And I'm looking at who was here. Although, we can't even approve the minutes because nobody was here from the last one.
Although, we will be meeting annually from now on.
Okay. So, seriously, can we not approve the minutes because we weren't here?
You can approve the minutes, um-
We can, okay.
Nobody's there, yeah.
Okay.
Consent calendar. Oh, um, approval of the minutes of the meeting is December fourth, two thousand one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Okay, that's passed. Now, where are we?
For real.
Uh, depart, departmental proposed two thousand eleven tax allocation bond.
Call again. This evening, um, this would be the action required from the capital improvements authority and its approval of the resolution authorizing the sale of the bonds in the amount not to exceed seventeen million and taking other actions as required pursuant to the resolution as described within it.
Is there a motion? Or, wait, is there any discussion first before we go through the motion? Is there a motion?
I move to accept the, uh, resolution.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Not, we'll call for the roll call vote.
Um, I, chair person, I'm sorry. Vice Chair Powers?
Aye.
Authority member Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Payne?
Okay, now we are going to adjourn from the capital improvement authority and reconvene to the Galt City Council. Where are we on this? Where are we on this?
City clerk's report, thank you. And just a couple reminders, on February seventh, we will have the city about, the Galt City Council Youth Committee, six p.m. in the City Hall Community Room. On February ninth, the Parks and Recreation Commission will meet here in the council chambers at seven p.m. On February tenth, the Planning Commission will meet in the council chambers at six p.m., and that will take us to our next city council meeting of February fifteenth.
Comments from staff?
I have a few. Uh, first is just to, uh, acknowledge the success of our winter bird festival that we had on Saturday, stealing Mary Lou's thunder, it looks like.
Stealing my thunder.
Um, great success, and I know each, the council members that were there will probably have other things to say, but I wanted to thank Jennifer Kennel, my executive assistant, all the hard work that she put into that, Voice Jeffries for his efforts in coordinating a lot of the logistics, Liz Aguirre for her efforts in publicizing and getting the newspapers to respond. It really was a team effort this year to, to get the word out, get the tours. We had a lot of, um, people that went on the tours, a lot of people that showed up for the presentations, and it was just a great event to showcase Galt and all that we have to offer for, for the residents here as well as the area, and we had people travel from, really from, from all over Northern California to attend the bird festival, so it was good. Is that good enough?
Good.
One, one other comment that I had, which is, um, just to let the, the council, the community know, at our next council meeting, we're going to ask the council to, uh, appoint members to serve on a community panel that would be part of the police chief selection process, so if members of the public are watching this and they have an interest in serving on that, please submit a lot of interest into the city clerk. Uh, we're going to be making those appointments at the next, uh, city council meeting. And I think that's it. For me, staff, have any other comments? Greg?
Just one, since Liz didn't mention it, there will be a dedication ceremony for the Wachemata Treatment Fund Upgrade Project. It's Wednesday, February ninth, at four o'clock, at the treatment plant.
And everyone should have gotten an email on that.
Comments by council, uh, Councilman Singleton?
Uh, I just got to thank, I mean, just bang the job, just great, great job. I know you worked late nights doing that. Thank you so much for that. You know, you can't pat you on the back enough for doing that. Uh, and also, I want to thank Greg publicly. I went to him about an issue, about a curb I was concerned about by railroad tracks over off of Elm and, uh, McFarland, and it was a visibility issue, and he took care of it, I believe it was the next day, Greg, or something, and painted the curb white, and you can see it real well now, and I was worried about somebody running into that and possibly hurting themselves.
For what?
Thank you very much. I'm thanking you publicly, thank you. That's all I have.
The recognition, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Well, David, you did steal my thunder, but I, I did go to the bird festival for the first time ever, and I took my grandson, and we had a great time. And, um, there were just so many wonderful things there. There really was, that wild things, the, uh, all the live animals, which was really interesting. They even had a beaver and a kangaroo, which was pretty trippy along with all the birds. Um, so, I really, I, I personally wanted to thank city staff, too, for a wonderful job that they did. Um, Jennifer, and she said Misty Bell was the co-festival coordinator in the beginning, and, uh, Voice, always with his staff with Parks and Rec, uh, also, um, Liz, who I heard did a lot on that, too. And, I, I, you know, I'm going to promote it as much as I can next year because I think the more people that know about it, uh, it's just a wonderful thing, it's free, and we just had a great time. And, you know, there was a, there was a school there that was the only school in the whole state of California, and they were called the, um, I got to look up for the name of it. They were a school that had a, they were the Salida Junior High Reptile Education Club. Salida? Okay, sorry. And, um, they, you know, they, it was the only class that had all these girls and boys that they raised snakes and iguanas and all that stuff, and I, it was pretty, I thought it was pretty nifty. It was a great, you know, it was a great place for all the kids to come. They had this huge iguana, it was about this big, and, and it was just really interesting.[1585.12]